There where your sign is. So, this is a little bit of a strange setup so that the board members as well as the audience might understand. We have a presentation on world language tonight. The screen, when it comes down, is just in front of this table. And that's why we're pushed back a little bit further. We'll conduct the beginning of our business, the roll call, the pledge, student reports, and public comment. And then the board will go down to the auditorium seats to watch the presentation. And then we'll come back up here. And when we come back up here, the screen will be up and we can move these tables forward. So, having said that, I welcome you to the Board of Education meeting for Fairfield at May 19th, 2015, at Fairfield Woods Middle School. Present at the moment is Mrs. Eileen Lou McCormick, Mr. Mark Patton, Ms. Donna Carnell, Mrs. Jessica Gerger, myself, Philip Dwyer, Mr. Paul Fedewine, Mrs. Jennifer Maxon Canelli, and our student rep, Max Koosh. Have I said that?
Tyler.
Whoop. Oh, you're sitting at somebody else's chair. Thank you, Tyler. If I could have you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, the flag is to my right, your left.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's my understanding that we are not expecting Mr. Convatito. We may have Mr. Lou Allen join us as we proceed. So, Max, I think you are representing-
Tyler.
Tyler, Tyler, sorry, my apologies. Tyler, I think you are representing the entire school district tonight.
Yep, so.
But please speak on behalf of Fairfield Wood High School.
All right, so our juniors started S-Back testing today, as well as all of our AP exams ended last Friday. And many of our classes are preparing for their finals, which are rapidly approaching. Our junior prom was held on Saturday in our main courtyard, which was a huge success. And our senior prom will be held on May 30th. The National Honors Society at our school will be inducting new members this Thursday night. The ward band is preparing to march in the national, or in the Memorial Day Parade this weekend. And our annual ward day is scheduled for May 29th, which Bobby Valentine is presenting a pre-prom assembly for the seniors is also being held there. And also, our ward TV crew, which is our weekly ward TV show, is preparing for its final broadcast this Friday.
Any questions for our representative from ward? I know I've asked this before, but you're staying with us?
I believe this is my last meeting.
So generally, whenever a board member has their last meeting, we give them an opportunity to say whatever they wish. So if you'd like to take this opportunity, feel free.
Sure. So first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Saganos, Mr. Coyne, and the rest of the Fairfield Ward faculty, along with the entire board, for providing me with this amazing opportunity. In school, I've learned everything from government to calculus, and even how to calculate the amount of friction between a car and a road. Preparing and presenting to the board every month has helped hone in my public speaking and presentation skills, which will become very important as I continue on to college. This experience has helped me not only grow as a student, but as a person as well. I've really enjoyed my time here, and it has been an absolute honor to represent my school this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tyler. Any board members wish to make a final comment? You'll stay for the whole board meeting tonight. That's your award, yeah. Anybody wish to make any comments? Ms. Carnell.
I just wish you good luck and to the places you'll go as you enter the real world.
Thank you.
So enjoy the next few weeks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is public comment for any member of the public that wishes to make a comment on agenda items. If it's a discussion item, you may make the comment now, or you can wait for the discussion to take place and then make the comment later. You can't make the comment both now and later. You have one opportunity. If it's a voting item, for items that we take public comment on and voting items, you make that comment at the time that we've had the item come up on the agenda for vote. Any members of the public wish to come forward to address the board? Please state your name and address.
Kelly Jacobson, Fairfield resident. And I have some comments about the district improvement plan, which I believe is on the agenda for tonight. Okay, great. First off, for this plan, we believe it is absolutely imperative that you analyze and report out data by elementary school on an annualized basis. It's just not enough to say that analysis is being handled at the school level by administrators and data teams. Our sense is there is a significant lack of oversight in this area, and that is leading to wide disparities in performance across our schools over time. Adding to our concerns at this elementary level are that, one, starting July 1st, we will have three different people in the position of director of elementary ed in the past 10 months. Two, there are some big disparities in practices across our 11 different schools, and we see schools having much different outcomes, which we believe can be tied to these practices. Three, rarely if ever are test scores and other in-class work proactively shared with parents at the elementary school level. Our kids are being tested so much, math tests, assessments, I read it, but as parents, we hardly see any results. Why should our own children's work and all of the data that the district is collecting on our children be held in such secrecy? Why bother with so much testing if you won't regularly share with parents, with the people most vested in our children's development? Sharing this info with parents is especially important since there are virtually no tools for us to help our children with work at home or allow kids to learn at home, a place which maybe offer a more appropriate environment for some learners. At the same time, the district hasn't even finalized a rubric for progress reports, though our progress reports have been in place for three years now. How can we, as parents, help our children along their educational journey when there's little communication around what our children are expected to learn each year, how we're going to help get them there, and how they are progressing throughout the year? Fourth, lastly, some of the practices being implemented to teach our kids math, reading, and writing at the elementary level are still arguably very experimental in nature, and as such need to be scrutinized much more closely. A few examples of these experimental practices are, one, much more group and conceptual work in math at the expense of direct instructional time and development of math fluency; two, much embedded learning for things like spelling, vocabulary, and grammar; three, supporting materials that are being created internally while many other high-performing school districts have implemented externally published textbooks and materials. These are significant departures from traditional learning models that we cannot afford to wait any longer to actively scrutinize their effectiveness or lack thereof. And it should be mentioned that though there are many parents like ourselves that are very concerned about the quality of the elementary program in this town, from our vantage point has very little to do with the quality or dedication of the teaching staff, which our own experience has been exceptional. Another point we want to make relates to page four of the plan, where it's written that the long-term district goal is to ensure that every student is engaged in a rigorous learning experience that recognizes and values the individual and challenges each student to achieve academic progress. How is this rigorous learning experience actually defined? Does this mean that the district is actually helping each child reach their full potential, regardless if it exceeds district standards that are in place?
Mrs. Jacobson, you're at the three minutes, if you could.
I'm gonna shut her.
If your partner wants to finish, you're more than welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Jacobson, Fairfield resident. Further down on this, further down in regards to educational goals within the improvement plan, the first several bullets are items such as, of course, we want our children to exhibit ethical behavior, demonstrate strong motivational persistence to learn and exhibit, among other things listed here. The final bullet, under educational goals, is acquiring knowledge of science, technology, math, arts, social studies, visual and performance aids. At the bottom, once again, I would think that would be a top goal under education, and I would think we would want much more than just acquiring, perhaps mastering subject matter or excellence in performance in these areas. A final point we would like to make is that when data is reported out to anyone in the district, it should be done so in a way that not only supports any positive outcome for our district has achieved, but illuminates issues of concern or opportunity. Let us share an example. On the 17th page of the plan, in front of you, it seeks to measure out the report out on science CMT results for 5th graders. Well, back in the fall, our schools, our children's school did report out data, and it was published in the following manner. We recently received our 5th grade's science CMT results. As always, our students did very well. Eighty-five percent of our students scored at or above level. Additionally, 23% of the students scored at the highest level. Twenty-three percent at the highest level seems very good at first glance. However, in the previous year, 37%. Thirteen percent previously, in the previous year, had done better. And then when you compare it against other schools in our district, we were the third lowest at advanced. And other schools were double or triple than what our school did. Not only do we want our school to tell us about positive results, but we want to know when there is something to learn from the practices of other schools. There are far too many examples like this in the data of just being thrown out there by the administration in a somewhat misleading way. When the majority of you voted to restrict public comment to agenda items earlier this year, wasn't one of the concerns raised by some of you that members of the school, of the public, just throwing out information or data before it could have the chance to be validated? Well, what protections do we, as parents, are afforded in this area? What incentives do administrators have to report out the full story? It is, to this end, we strongly believe we need some sort of external education practices that the program audits done in our district. And that consideration of this to be explored, and we ask that consideration of this to be explored immediately. We need strong, open-minded leaders that are not afraid to be upfront for what's happening in our schools and to change course if needed. We also need district administrators, as well as Board of Ed members, that are dedicated to improving the ongoing dialogue with parents in the meeting.
Ms. Jacobson, you've got three minutes. Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to come forward to address the board? Okay, thank you. We will now go to the presentation on world language. I'd ask the board members to go down to the auditorium seats. The screen will come down magically, and then we'll watch the presentation, and then come back up for the board meeting. Yeah, if you want to follow with a handout, bring it down with you.
We're very pleased to present the culmination of over a year's worth of work by the World Language Department. And leading the presentation this evening are our World Language Curriculum Coordinators, Eileen Frankel, who's the coordinator for grades 9 through 12, and Jennifer Cohenhoven, who is the coordinator for grades 4 through 8. And I will turn this presentation over to them.
Buenas noches, buenas sera, bonsua. Wang Shang Hao, Bonam Westrum, good evening. My name is Eileen Frankel, World Language Coordinator, grades 9 through 12. And my colleague-
Jennifer Cohenhoven, grades 4 through 8.
Before we get started this evening, I'd like to give you an overview of our program. In grades 4 and 5, learners are exposed to 25 minutes of Spanish instruction twice per week for a total of 30 hours per year. At the end of 5th grade, learners now will be given the option of selecting Spanish or French, which, beginning in September, will be for 46 minutes daily for a total of 140 hours per year in grade 6 and grade 7. The Level 10 has been distributed over grade 6 and 7 in order to establish a solid foundation for our middle school learners. In grade 8, learners will continue their language study and take Level 20 offered daily for a total of 140 hours per year. Learners continuing with either French or Spanish in grade 9 will move to the Level 30, meeting every other day in our new block schedule for 85 minutes per class. Grade 10 learners move on to the 40 level, grade 11 to the 50 level, and seniors select AP or Level 60. Of course, in the high school, Italian, Latin, and Mandarin are also offered. In grades 9, 10, 11, or 12, learners can opt to begin French, Italian, Latin, Mandarin, or Spanish, following the sequence. In Latin, seniors may opt for the 40 or Level 40 or AP. Now, I would like to begin to share with you the process for writing our curriculum. In preparation for revising the curriculum, we held rounds in the fall of 2012. At our opening meeting in August, Dr. Tidal presented the rounds process to all of the world language teachers, grades 4 through 12. Teachers then worked in groups, determining our areas of strength and areas in which improvements would lead to greater student achievement. The work done by the teachers before, during, and after the rounds process provided invaluable input as we began to write our curriculum. In addition, I have been able to attend for the past nine years the ACTVOL and NADZVOL conferences, where I have been exposed to the most recent research concerning world language acquisition. I have also met the most respected members of the world language community in the United States and have learned what the cutting-edge districts are doing to create global citizens and lifelong learners who have developed the ability to communicate effectively and interact with cultural competence to participate in multilingual communities at home and around the world. The states of Virginia and Ohio are far ahead of the curve, and districts like Fairfax County and Loudoun County in Virginia, and the Blue Valley District in Ohio are leading the way for innovative and meaningful language instruction in the United States. Our department work began in May of 2014, when we had a two-day teacher training for 20 world language teachers in the district, led by Laura Terrell, a well-known figure in the world language community and the co-author of Keys to Planning for Learning: Effective Curriculum, Unit and Lesson Design. During the two-day workshop, Laura explained the rationale for writing thematic units and provided teachers with training to begin our work. From June to August, the teachers who had been trained worked in teams on the documents that we are presenting here tonight. In October, several teachers traveled to Glastonbury for the day to observe a well-established program that is theme-based, and our teachers had the opportunity to speak with teachers, as well as the building coordinator and the district world language leader. From August to November, all teachers were involved in the internal review of the documents. During December and January, edits were then made based on teacher feedback. In February, we held two parent focus groups, one for grades 4 and 5 and levels 10 and 20, and a second for levels 31 through AP. At that time, the drafts of the documents were posted on the district website. During March and April, final edits were made to the documents. The final drafts were posted again to the website, and of course, we are here tonight presenting to you. At the ACTVOL conference, I was able to contact all of the vendors and requested sample texts. Our initial review of resources by teachers occurred from January to March. The teachers determined that for the levels 10 and 20 in Spanish and French, our present texts would not adequately deliver our newly revised curriculum. After reviewing all of the resources, the teachers determined which of the vendors should be invited to present their material. In March, a representative group of teachers, administrators, and central office personnel participated in the vendor presentations. In April, parents were invited to review the resources at central office. In May, we did the final review of the feedback from our stakeholders, and our recommendation was presented to Dr. Tidal for final approval. The primary goal of the Fairfield Public Schools' world language program is to create global citizens and lifelong learners who have developed the ability to communicate effectively and interact with cultural competence to participate in multilingual communities at home and around the world. Learners in the Fairfield Public Schools are immersed in a world language program which emphasizes knowing how, the grammar; when, the context; and why, the purpose; to say what, the vocabulary; to whom, the audience. The grammar and vocabulary, the what and the how, are the building blocks for meaningful and purposeful use of the target language where there is a real need to communicate. In order to produce meaningful communication, the learner must identify the when, the why, and the whom. Emphasis on these five components will build global citizens able to succeed in an ever-shrinking world. I would also like to highlight the word learner. The new national world language standards now address our young adults as learners and not students, because they will be actively engaged in the learning process. As we move through our journey this evening, it will become evident how our program focuses knowing how, when, and why to say what to whom. There are four major shifts in our curriculum. The adoption of the world readiness standards, the shift to thematic units, a clearly aligned program both vertically and horizontally, and emphasis on the three modes of communication. Our previous documents were based on the 2005 Connecticut World Language Curriculum Framework. Obviously, created in 2005, the framework was based on the National Standards for Language Learning, which were first published in 1999. These are subtitled "Preparing for the 21st Century." Our present documents are based on the newly released 2015 World Readiness Standards for Learning Languages, created not only by ACTVOL, the National World Language Organization, but also all of the individual national language organizations, French, Italian, Latin, Mandarin, and Spanish. For example, the 2005 Connecticut World Language Curriculum Framework for the Presentational Communication Standard states, "Students present information, concepts, and ideas to an audience of listeners or readers on a variety of topics." The 2015 World Readiness Standards for Learning Languages makes the shift to the term learners. The learners will not only present information, concepts, and ideas, but they will do this to inform, explain, persuade, and narrate on a variety of topics using appropriate media and adapting to various audiences of listeners, readers, or viewers. As you can see, in order to meet this standard, the learners must know how, when, and why to say what to whom. What would this look like at different levels in our program? In grade 4, Unit 1, entitled "My Personal Puzzle," it is an introductory unit in which the young learners will answer the question, "What are the pieces that make up my personal puzzle?" After approximately eight hours, learners will introduce themselves using appropriate gestures and body language. They will be presenting ideas in order to inform their audience. At the 20 level, the Health and Wellness Unit, which is focused, focuses on what does it mean to maintain a healthy lifestyle, learners will persuade others to maintain a healthy lifestyle. Finally, at the 50 level, a unit on immigration, learners will determine how immigration creates and changes communities. In this unit, learners will prepare a presentation after having explored why people immigrate and the obstacles they face in various countries. Our second major shift is from a textbook-driven curriculum, going page by page, unit by unit, and covering all the material, to a revised curriculum, which is thematic. The documents are all based on the advanced placement themes. The Spanish and French themes are identical: global challenges, science and technology, contemporary life, personal and public identities, families and communities, and beauty and aesthetics. Each of these major themes is broken into the sub-themes on which we base all of our documents. Not all six themes are evident in each level, but are distributed throughout the program. The Latin themes, literary genre and style, Roman values, war and empire, leadership, view of non-Romans, history and memory, and human beings and the gods are also evident throughout our four-year program. The third major shift is the alignment of our documents. When we wrote our documents in 2007 and 2009, it was done in a very arbitrary manner. This led to alignment between some levels and gaps between others. In 2015, by preparing all of the documents at the same time, we've been able to align them both vertically and horizontally. Vertically, from grades 4 to 12, there is alignment. We spiral and review material, but we do not reteach concepts. The documents are also horizontally aligned. A Level 10 student, whether Spanish, French, Italian, or Mandarin, will be able to do similar tasks. This component as well will allow for greater collaboration among all world language teachers. The last major shift deals with the three modes of communication. Believe it or not, in 2009, before the introduction of the iPods and the laptops, we did not assist speaking. Our focus was on written communication only. Over the years, we have been moving away from emphasizing only written communication, but as you can see in our documents, every unit now contains the three modes of communication: interpersonal, communication between two people; interpretive, understanding spoken and written language; and presentational, both oral and written communication. The World Readiness Standards for Language Learning are based on the five Cs: communication, cultures, connections, comparisons, and communities. As you can see by the visual, they are all interconnected. In order to communicate effectively, one must have an understanding of the culture in order to realize that there are multiple ways of viewing the world. You will find that the five Cs and the 11 standards associated with them are in every unit in every document. As Jennifer takes you through a unit at the Level 10, you will see each of these evident. Related to the five Cs are the three Ps. When one talks of culture, it is necessary to identify the product, explain the practice, and understand the perspective. To develop a deeper understanding of other cultures, one must understand that practices vary because of distinct perspectives. For example, the product, a loaf of bread, is very important in some cultures, but not so in others. The learners must be able to explain the practice. When and how is bread served? And also explain why the practice exists. That's the perspective. I will now turn the presentation over to Jennifer, who will share with you Unit 1 of our Level 10.
You have been provided a Level 10 document, so that you can follow along with me. The curriculum at all levels is horizontally aligned across all four languages, French, Italian, Mandarin, and Spanish. This allows for a common experience for all Fairfield students. The Latin documents are different due to different AP themes, and the use of the language itself for communication is clearly different. All of the documents from grade 4 up to AP are structured the same. I will now present highlights from the Level 10 document. On the first page, the primary goal of the Fairfield Public Schools' world language curriculum is stated, followed by a description of the overarching emphasis for learners to know how, when, and why to say what to whom. Our focus is on the three communicative modes: presentational, interpretive, and interpersonal, while always considering the target culture's three Ps: the products, practices, and perspectives. The following bullets are Level-specific. The learner in Level 10 will communicate, understand, and derive meaning, begin to make inferences, and write lists and short messages throughout all five units. You will find, as the learner advances from level to level, these bullets become increasingly rigorous. Please turn to page 3. Here you see the rich essential questions that will drive instruction and learning for each unit in Level 10. Who am I? How do family and community influence me? How do I manage my time? How do I use my imagination? And what makes a travel destination special? The aim for these essential questions is to stimulate thought, provoke inquiry, and above all, support Fairfield Public Schools World Language Goal for learners to communicate effectively and interact with cultural competence. Please turn to Page Six. The following pages outline each unit with its unit topic and AP theme, its language functions, related structures, and vocabulary necessary to communicate the how and what. Please turn to Page 11. Each unit throughout all levels is structured in the same way. First, you see the AP theme: personal and public identities, and the topic for the unit, getting to know you, followed by an overview of the unit. Beginning-level language learning appropriately begins talking about oneself. In an effort to bring the learners beyond themselves, in support of our goal to create global citizens, the Level 10 learner will take on a cultural identity in order to explore what their life would be like in the target culture. They will answer the essential questions from their own perspective as a Fairfield student and also from the perspective of an adolescent from the target cultures around the world. The essential question, "Who am I?" allows for the exploration of how people define themselves. Throughout the unit, learners will participate in activities outlined in the unit focus in order to guide them to answer the essential question. Because each curriculum document is based upon the five Cs of the World Readiness Standards for Learning Languages, in every unit we incorporate the five Cs, including the specific content standards and within the culture standard, the three Ps. No one C is more important than another. As Eileen pointed out, the graphic shows how the five Cs are interconnected. The first C, communication, incorporates the three modes: interpersonal, which includes our instructional rounds' focus on student-to-student discourse; interpretive, which allows the learners to go beyond a simple comprehension of the words to include a cultural understanding of authentic resources; and presentational, requiring the learners to convey their message as intended with both linguistic and cultural competence. Within every unit, learners will have opportunities to practice performing in all three modes. The second C, culture, relates the three Ps to the unit's theme, adding cultural richness to the content. Learners will identify and interpret key cultural traits and concepts, resulting in sensitive and meaningful interaction. Connections refers to making connections to other disciplines, such as geography, math, and even health. Interdisciplinary learning is a critical component to open doors for knowledge to flow from one classroom to another. Comparisons includes exploring similarities and differences between languages and cultures. This allows the learner to develop insight into his or her own language and culture while learning about the target language and culture. Communities helps the learner to go beyond the classroom and even beyond Fairfield, furthering our goal for our learners to become global citizens and lifelong learners. Finally, we get to the lesson-planning components, including the how and what learners will communicate. Used together, these structures and vocabulary are the components that the learners will use to support the unit focus and answer the essential question for the unit: who am
So how will this new curriculum be evaluated? There will be common internal assessments, including midterms and finals, as well as unit communicative assessments based on the three modes of communication. Also, common rubrics will be developed for these assessments. We presently administer AP exams in French, Latin, and Spanish. We will also begin to administer the APL, the APL Assessment of Performances in Languages, at the end of the 20 level, Grade Eight, for second-year students at the high school; and the ALIRA, the APL Latin Interpretive Reading Assessment, at the end of the Level 20. In addition, building administrators will continue to do classroom observations. What are the budgetary implications? Tax for the 10 and 20 in French and Spanish, total $268,000, and the Latin, $20,000. PD and the creation of implementation guides, total $24,350. You have taken a brief journey of our program tonight, and you can see how we will create learners who communicate effectively and interact with cultural competence to participate in multilingual communities at home and around the world. These photos of our high school students communicating and interacting with cultural competence in Spain and at home as they host Spanish gifts. We would like to thank all of our World Language teachers who have contributed to the process and to those here tonight.
See Jessica's hand, but at the moment, let me see if Dr. Boyce has any wrap-up comment that you would like to make, or whether the Deputy Superintendent would want to make any comment, and then we'll go to Q and A. You may not have any comments.
No, I just would like to thank the entire department for their work on this. I think it's clear that it was extensive and well-detailed, and I certainly value their efforts.
I would ditto that, and also thank you for the excellent presentation.
And for our staff member who suffers during allergy season, I thank you for coming out and presenting. I think, Jennifer, you had your first hand raised, so ask what other questions. Again, I would remind board members that, so that all of us can participate, if you have lots and lots of questions, perhaps you break them up and we'll come back to you.
Okay. First of all, just to reiterate, thank you so much. That was a wonderful presentation, thorough. I wish I could say it was so good that it answered all my questions, but in fact, it was so fascinating. I've got a whole new page of questions, so as Mr. Dwyer mentions, out of deference to that, I will email as many of them to you as I can, as quickly as I can, especially so that I can decipher my handwriting. But thank you for that, it was wonderful. And to all the staff who are here in support of it, I thank them as well. So I do have a number of questions, and I will apologize that I did not get these to you prior to today, so I asked these with no expectation of that you're necessarily prepared to answer them all. But I would like to start with the idea of the, I don't want to call it leveling, but the notion that with the fourth and the fifth grade background in language and culture, with the expected, hoped-for, budgetary support for a rollout to still lower grades. Just the notion that students are going to be hitting this curriculum at such different times, whether they're with us from kindergarten, whether they're joining us in sixth grade, just picking up Spanish in sixth grade, or having been pursuing it since kindergarten. I'm just wondering, how does the curriculum address that without levels?
I think I mentioned when we gave the presentation in November on the program that certainly over time, if we're able to continue to offer World Language in the lower elementary grades, we'll have to make some adjustments to what we're doing. I very openly acknowledge that. I think the program that we've designed is the right program for next year, knowing that in fourth and fifth grade, the time with World Language is very limited. And in a minute, I'm going to ask the teachers to talk a little bit about native speakers and heritage speakers, something I learned about in going through this process. But I know now, even probably in the high school more than the middle school, there is the option for students to accelerate, to be tested, to determine if they've already mastered a certain level and moved on. And that certainly may be something we will continue to do and may have to move down to the middle school to do as well. But I think the most important thing for us probably is to live with this for a year, to see how it rolls out, and as we do that, to begin to think about adjustments we would need to make as students develop a greater expertise in World Language earlier than they do now.
I mean, obviously, I think it's invaluable, the cultural component to this as well, but it was, especially the language, that was my question. All right, so that's, just, sorry.
If you have members of your support team out there that you think from time to time you'd want to call on to respond to a question, feel free.
Dr. Tytle loves doing that. Okay, well, one quick question that I have to ask. I found very curious in the Latin documents, speaking.
Actually, the 2015 World Readiness Standards include Latin, and they are really emphasizing that students begin to speak Latin more than they have been. So that document, again, is supported by all of the World Language organizations, the individual organizations, including the Latin American Classical League. And actually, this summer, they are working to create assessments and exemplars for the schools to have. So they're working on that. I have a couple, but they are certainly working on that to help us with that.
Okay, that was really a minor question, but that just kind of jumped off the page at me as I was looking at it. Well, your answer regarding the fact that, excuse me, adjustments are expected, that this is really one-year, almost snapshot, and that after that, there'll be adjustments, that just took care of actually multiple questions that I have. So I'm very glad to hear that said because it seems to me it would be inevitable and necessary to keep, maintain the rigor of this program, that that is part of it. So again, that's just knocked off a whole bunch of questions. I was wondering, though, if you could articulate, what would you consider to be the academic goal, then, of the elementary, of the fourth and fifth grade curriculum posed here?
Because the students are meeting 30 hours each in fourth and fifth grade, we have our focus of the Spanish program in the fourth and fifth grades really to be a solid introduction to the language, get them intrigued in the idea of another language, excited, and really build the foundation for the comprehension.
And, again, as I said, your presentation handled a lot of, oh, one other, here's one other question, and then, Mr. Dwyer, I'll defer at that point and let others question and maybe come back to me. For the Spanish AP, is it the language and culture or literature and culture, and how did you determine that?
We've traditionally done the language and culture exam. As the program increases, if we are lucky enough to have a program beginning in kindergarten, then perhaps we could do the language and culture in 11th grade, and then the literature in 12th.
And I apologize, one other quick question. One other change I noticed was moving to 30s and 40s away from 31, at least in the freshman year. I was wondering what the reason for that was.
We are just calling it 30 level, 40 level, 50 level. We will still have the 41 and the 42.
Okay.
But just to be consistent, we went 10, 20, 30, 40, but we are not changing it to 30.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jessica, Mr. Patton, see that?
Thanks very much, and thanks for the presentation. It was really very helpful. I guess one question I had is about the Italian 40 because it's together with, it's together with the French and Spanish, and then it's separated out at 40. I just was curious as to what the right.
The Italian teachers felt because we start in Grade Nine, and their 40 is made up of seniors, the 40 in the Spanish and French are primarily 10th graders.
Right.
There were a couple of the themes that they felt they really wanted their students to have before they left. So they combined some 40 themes and then some 50 themes. And I believe the themes are immigration and careers, jobs, that sort of thing, because they just felt the seniors should have that before they left.
Okay. And then I guess, I know it's already been brought up once, but just going to get a little more clarification as to the whole idea that you will be changing things as we progress, you know, theoretically, if we could, are able to go backwards into third and so group. Like, do you have a kind of a, I know you don't want to commit anything specific, but just kind of a general timetable as to how you think that will work? Like, will it be a yearly? Will it be twice yearly? Will it, I just was curious to get a little more clarification on that.
Well, I really think we need to live with this for the next year, and as the teachers develop common assessments and we start using the national tests that we're using after Level 20, we're going to have a much clearer idea of how the students are progressing through the elementary levels and how they're arriving in sixth grade and what we're able to accomplish in Level 10 in the middle school. This is a new, it's somewhat uncharted territory for us, because even before, when World Language was offered in sixth grade, it was not Level 10.
Right.
It was an introduction. So I want to be very sure, it's the foundational, the foundation we give to students in World Language is happening primarily in sixth and seventh grade, and I want to make very sure it's a good, solid foundation. So I think what will become very evident as teachers give common assessments and start to talk about what they see happening in their classrooms, I think it will become clear what we think sixth and seventh graders can accomplish and how much of that is being contributed to by the fourth and fifth grade program. And as we add years to the elementary program, obviously, students will come into sixth grade more ready than they are now.
Right.
And that will, again, drive changes in the middle school program.
Okay. And then I guess one thing that you mentioned in your presentation was that, once you were developing the curriculum, you realized that the textbook was not going to be sufficient for the curriculum. Were there any kind of specific areas or topics in the curriculum that you feel really kind of pushed it towards needing this new textbook, like, or is it just kind of an overall general, just progression on all levels?
It's really on all levels. When you're talking about the interpersonal communication, the presentational communication, the interpretive, our books that we presently have are very weak in that area. The new textbooks, again, we're very lucky that we were able to use the 2015 World Readiness Standards, and so the books that we chose are the books that were created based on that. And so those areas are very, very strong. Every unit has got something interpersonal. Every unit has got something presentational.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Patton, followed by, I'll wait for the hand to come up. Mr. Patton.
In terms, oh, in terms of how the, at least the 10 through 40 progression is working, so in simple terms, before Level 10 was seventh and eighth grade, and now Level 10 will be sixth and seventh grade, will basically give us an extra level of progression into high school, correct?
It used to be, we used to call them, at the high school level, it was 10 and 20, and at the middle school level, we called it seven and eight, and it wasn't the same course. So with the ability of writing this curriculum, we were able to make it the same curriculum document. So currently, what we're proposing is the Level 10 document would be over sixth and seventh grade, and the Level 20 document would be eighth grade.
Okay, so in terms of, for example, you know, college X requires you to have, you know, four years of a language. So are we saying that previously, the seventh and eighth version, and then the whatever the 10, 20, 30 version was in ninth through, I guess, 11th grade, that now will get kind of shifted back one? Does that change? In other words, is now sixth and seventh grade an official Level 10 progression?
It's my understanding that the middle school, you can probably speak better to the colleges requiring. the colleges requiring four years of language. But the middle school years, it would be shifted. So they still want four years of a language. At the high school, it could be levels 10 through 40. It could be levels 30 through AP. It's not level, it's not our Fairfield Public Schools level specific.
Right, so, but instead of basically getting a level in seventh and eighth grade that was kind of combined, as opposed to starting a brand-new language in ninth grade, now, in theory, you've got sixth and seventh grade seem to be combined into a level, eighth grade is a level, and then you've got four. So you've got six potential levels between middle school and high school, whereas, let's say, before, we only had five levels. So Eileen is shaking her head. So that's, that's where my clarification is, I'm asking for clarification.
Students currently in middle school who begin French or Spanish in seventh grade take Level 30 in ninth grade. So that, that transition to ninth grade will still be a Level 30 course. What's different is because, as Eileen mentioned, the approval of the curriculum came in two separate times, the love, the grade seven and grade eight course currently taught is not identical to the Level 10 and 20 courses taught at the high school. And similarly to what we did in math, for example, the Algebra I course in eighth grade is the Algebra I course in high school. It's the same course. So we're now doing the same thing in world language. There are no different middle school courses. Level 10 in high school is Level 10 in middle school, but we're spending two years on Level 10.
Okay. So I, so the, the new program makes sense, that I understand. I was, I guess I'm trying to figure out what the, how the old version worked, but now I think I, does that make sense? I see what you're saying. Anyway, so, all right, so my first concrete question is, can you give us some examples at the elementary level in fourth and fifth grade and then in the secondary level of actual changes? Pick, pick any topic you want of something that we, we taught something one way before, and now we're going to teach it a different way. I understand the things that you're adding that we didn't do in terms of changing of the textbooks because they didn't, they didn't showcase, you know, the things that we want.
There's one unit in the, the fifth grade that's different than the way they've done it before in the past. The fifth grade has studied the Galapagos Islands, for example, and they've learned about the animals, and they have labeled the animals, and they've identified the animals and described the color of the animals and how the animals are. And in our new curriculum, we're going to be able to take it to a new level and talk about the environment and how the animals are being affected with the environment. And we're going to talk about ecotourism, and when you go to Ecuador, how can you protect the animals and what do the animals need to be able to, to live and to survive? So it's gone from a simple label in form in the presentation when the students are presenting information, now they're going to talk about more global issues.
Is there going to be any more enhanced conversational aspects in the fourth and fifth grade, or is that pretty much going to stay?
Instead of, for example, a poster where they would point and label, that we're shifting more towards persuading others why they need to protect these animals. So yes, it-
Using the language itself?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's what I was going with that. And again, the same question to, to the middle school area, whereas now you, you've got an extra four year in there.
I think maybe, I was thinking of the, the Health and Wellness Unit to persuade others how to live a healthy lifestyle. In the past, again, it was very labeling, these are the parts of my body, these are healthy foods I can eat, what do you do if you need to go to the doctor, how do you say, "My head hurts," where now they're going to be moving more towards, you know, how you can persuade someone else, you need to work out, you need to sleep well, you need to eat well. They're moving it more towards a lifestyle conversation as opposed to labeling and informing.
And also, not only talking about what we do here, but looking at other cultures as well. So what's a healthy lifestyle in the target culture? What are the, the healthy foods that people eat? The Mediterranean diet, what is that all about? You know, what are the differences between our dietary needs and our, how we eat and the way others eat? Fast foods, the AP exam, the Spanish AP exam, the cultural comparison question was on fast food. Students needed to identify how fast food influences our lives and how it influences the lives in the target culture. So we will be talking about all of these themes in a very deeper way, but also in terms of being able to compare the cultures.
And that's, is that, and that's fast food in France or Mexico or Spain, not, not compared to?
Right. Right. They needed to compare American culture. The question is, how is fast food envisioned in your culture? The students know that they need to compare it to, because it was on the Spanish exam, some target culture, a Spanish-speaking country.
Okay. My last quick question is budgetary. Were, maybe through the chair, Ms. Parks, or any of my fellow board members, in terms of remembering the budget changes for this, for the world language program, are we on target with the 270-ish thousand? And were we always, because we didn't sound like we were necessarily planning on new books, but I know that was kind of discussed.
Yes, we're on target.
Fair enough.
It is in the budget.
Other questions? Mr. Fadabene?
Sure thing.
And Mrs. Max and Cannelly, and then anybody else that wants to raise their hand.
I have five questions. I'll see if I can get to all of them. Hopefully, I will. The first one relates to a discussion that was just had here about Level 40 in Italian being separated out from Level 40 in the other languages. And the question is, the answer was that because the Level 40 in Italian were different grades and different things wanted to be accomplished in those different grades, I guess typically, as I understood the answer. My question arises as to whether or not that sort of disrupts or harms the effort to make horizontal alignment between languages. In other, in other words, you're not going to have, the, meet one of the goals of horizontal alignment in the languages because you're at a Level 40 teaching something different in Italian than you are in the other languages. So that's just a compromise, I would imagine. Is that accurate?
Actually, because everything is thematic, we could really have chosen different places to put the themes, but the teachers felt comfortable where they were, developing the theme based clearly on the level appropriateness. The materials that we use would be different in a Level 40 than we would use in a Level 50. The types of materials, the types of reading, the activities, what we would expect the students to do with that particular reading, if they were reading, or a video where they were listening. So the activities would be level appropriate.
And if I could add, it didn't start out this way. The Italian teachers made a very strong case for why they wanted to make these changes. And so this is a good example of how we listened to the teachers and compromised on what our original plan had been. And so Italian 40, we thought, they're right, we need to make these changes. And so as a result, as the culminating course in, in the Italian sequence, we did allow them to make some changes in the themes.
Okay. I just wanted to point that out. The other issue relates to Level 50. I guess Level 50 is only in French and Spanish. My belief is the other languages aren't likely to get to Level 50 in our sequence and grades, I imagine.
Right, because at the present time, we begin the other three languages in grade nine. Grade nine is a 10. Grade 10 is a Level 20. Grade 11 is the 30, and then grade 12 is the 40. So there is no opportunity for them to get to a 50 or 60.
The other question I have relates to the concept of the thematic units and where that sort of arose or derived from. Did it arise from this World Readiness Standards concept or some of the concepts from the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages or the National Association of District Supervisors of Foreign Languages? Where's the thematic, who else does it? Why are they promoting it? What's the history as to whether, how beneficial it is?
The AP themes in, I guess, 2011, I'm not quite sure, but I think 2011, the French AP changed to six thematic units. And then, two years later, the Spanish did that, and the, the Latin did that in between. So AP is driving it. We need to prepare our students for these six thematic themes. We can't do it in one year. We've been doing that, and it's, it's hit or miss. We've been very lucky. We've been hitting them all. But we needed to take those themes and bring them down. ACTFO, the American Association, also is very supportive of the thematic approach.
So there's some history with the thematic approach that it's beneficial for learning languages?
It's very beneficial for learning languages because we're taking the traditional, learn your food vocabulary in isolation, learn your body parts in isolation, and putting it into a theme where people and the students can use the material in a very different way. So again, lifestyle, there's lots of those little themes that we used to cover, but now in a very comprehensive way. And more meaningful.
Okay, thank you. The next question is, probably I should know the answer, but I don't, so I'm going to ask you. Is there such a thing as a, a Common Core curriculum of world languages? In other words, is that part of the Common Core world language?
We're not part of the Common Core, but the National Association did correlations. And so there is a document that correlates our world language standards to the Common Core. And if you'd like to see that, we could certainly share it.
Well, I guess my only question arises is we are aligning a lot of our curriculum to the Common Core curriculum. And I, I guess, is this new curriculum aligned to whatever Common Core curriculum there is for, for world languages? If there one exists, that we have to eventually comply with or, or be aligned with?
Again, there is no Common Core for world language.
Okay.
However, the National Association took the Common Core and laid out and said, well, when we do this, that's equivalent to this in the Common Core. When we do this in language, well, that's equivalent to the Common Core. But there is no Common Core.
Right. They use the concepts of Common Core to apply to world language, but there is no adopted Common Core curriculum, as I understand.
Right.
All right. Well, that gets to my last question and my favorite one. Since we're talking about language, and I like to be very precise in my language in most cases, I make an effort. One of my concerns, has been concerned in the past, is I'm not quite sure whether our primary goal is to create global citizens. I'm not sure what a global citizen is, and I'm not sure if we create them. What we really do, as I understand it, is prepare our, what I call students, maybe now learners, prepare them for a global society. So that's, if you look at our mission statement, it indicates that they're going to be successful participants in an ever-changing global society through a comprehensive educational program. We don't really have a mission to provide or, or create global citizens, that I know of. So I would just, for instance, this language appears in all the curriculum documents. My only suggestion is, is that you would, yeah, I would include that the, that the primary goal of the Fairfield Public Schools world language curriculum is to prepare students for a global society and to be lifelong learners. Now, I understand the distinction you make a little bit between students and learners, or not learners, is that what it is? Yeah, the new terminology. I don't have a big, I don't, I don't know if I really appreciate the difference between students and learners necessarily, other than you define learners as having a little bit more elements that I would also attribute to students, but it, it seems to be a preference now in the terminology of educators. But in any event, that, that's my last comment, I guess, and suggestion.
Thank you. Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
Mr. Fadabene just gave me a policy committee flashback.
Mrs. Lou McCormick.
I just had one follow-up question, and then the rest I'll defer to email, but the one part out of the presentation that I was extremely curious about, because I had not heard of this before, was your mention of Fairfax County in Virginia and Ohio. And obviously, those, the standards and the AP exam, I understand those as sources of information. But just to throw out there, I'm curious, what is it that Virginia and Ohio do that has brought them such renown? And what did we take from that that wasn't just contained in those standards and the framework and the AP?
I think both of those states are very much ahead of the curve in terms of the thematic units. If you go to their websites, they have everything very clearly laid out. And so their thematic units and their whole structure on the state website is carried down through all of the counties, or not all of them, but certainly the ones that I've mentioned, others as well. If you open Loudoun County or Fairfax County, they have a very comprehensive curriculum. And yes, we, I looked at it a lot. I don't want to say I stole things from it, but I, we certainly looked at it a lot and created our documents with, with that in mind.
To that point, I'm, I just, final point is that where success has been measured, I'm all for not reinventing the wheel. So I was applauding that, and that's why I was just curious what you had gotten from them. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Lou McCormick.
Thanks for that presentation. That was great. And you incorporated some of the comments that I had given during our discussions, so I really appreciate that, too. So question regarding Fairfax. Out of curiosity, I know you talked with them extensively in Ohio. When did they start the language? And like, how did they pace it? When did they start language?
At what grade?
Yeah, at what grade?
Off the top of my head, I know that the Ohio, the Blue Valley District does start in kindergarten, but I would really, if you'd like more information, I would really need to look into it.
And how about Fairfax? Was it kindergarten?
I can tell you, since I've worked there for a while, they, they have a very diverse population. They have many languages already in the schools, and they actually moved to immersion programs in some schools, not all schools. So some schools have immersion language programs, and in other cases, I believe they offer in the primary grades, I'm not sure if it's K1 or 2, but it's very early in elementary.
And then my next question is, do, did they select, did they use the same text that we do, that we've selected or recommended?
Many of the districts that are going to thematic units are not using textbooks at all. And so teachers are creating and using authentic materials. For us, we felt that we needed to, at this point, support the teachers with a textbook, but many of the districts are moving away from it. Glastonbury, which is also a, a top-notch district, does not use a textbook.
And so I guess, well, if I go back to Fairfax and Ohio, they start so young, almost before the kids can read, right? So they're introducing language kind of verbally and conceptually in the beginning, and then they're introducing the reading, probably along with English reading at the same time. And so they're using a completely probably different set of instructional materials, right, I would assume, than what we, how we would approach it.
Right. But I think in Ohio, there are certain districts, Blue Valley does start very early, but there are other districts that are not, and they are still moving toward the thematic units.
Okay. I have to say, I do like the thematic units. I think that's kind of an interesting way of kind of wrapping a language in. I guess I, I have a couple of, and you know these questions because I've mentioned to them, them before to you, of kind of structural concerns on the way we're approaching it. I have a, I'm wondering whether the way we're approaching language, I know what our end objective is, but how we get there? Are we doing this the most efficient and effective way to benefit the kids as quickly as we can? I love the fact that we're going to make sixth grade whole. I think that's better than not having sixth grade whole. Are we leveraging that? My understanding, and I've heard this, this is from, you know, some teachers, that they are concerned that we are taking something that used to be seventh grade and now breaking it into two years. And are we going to actually dilute the pace of learning for a bunch of kids? And that that's not enough material to be covered. And then, let me back it up further with my mind, which goes even further back to fourth and fifth grade. Why couldn't we take the same material and cover the first two chapters, or first chapter at least, in fourth and fifth grade, and then not repeat it, but build on that in sixth grade to then cover the next two chapters and then so forth, as opposed to fourth and fifth grade being completely separate and unrelated and then almost starting over again in sixth and seventh grade?
Um, there was a lot in there.
Yes, I'm sorry. There is a lot in there.
I, our brains work with the last thing that we heard, so I'll address. I understand that there is some con- that there is some concern about starting over in grade six. When we wrote the grades four and five documents, we were very cognizant of what was already in the Level 10 document, because we were backing them down, so that we were making the Level 10 horizontal across all of the languages. And so then, when we looked at the grades four and five, we wanted to make sure that that wasn't going to be happening, that the students would not be starting over. There are some of the structures, the related structures, that are the same. But as Eileen had mentioned at one point, we call it spiraling. You don't introduce something in one level and then forget it in that level. It comes back again. In grade five, it comes back again. You know, the idea of what is your name, my name is, it's going to come back, not necessarily starting over. We call it spiraling.
Well, I guess, you know, just looking at the textbook, you know, the first chapter is introducing yourself, how old am I, you know, the standard questions. So if you're going to start with that in fourth grade, and then you're going to build on that in fifth grade. And now we're saying that sixth grade is only going to be two units, one of which is that topic again. That seems to be like killing the topic of how are you, my name is, and this is where I live.
I think if you look in the, I think if you look in the, I think if you look in the Level 10 unit focus, the bullets of the first unit, you can see that we go beyond what is your name and how old are you to answer the essential question, who am I?
Right. I guess, you know, after having looked at the books, I just, I remain concerned, this is my one concern with this whole thing. I love the whole concept. I'm concerned about the pacing of it. I'm concerned about the order in which we're rolling this out. I would have, I would have preferred that if we were going to do world language, let's do it in one false swoop, suck it up, and let's just fund it and do it. And then we roll out a whole new generation of language, as opposed to taking little steps, adjusting, and then we have a lot of patches going back in time constantly. This is my big concern. Are we really using our funds as efficiently as we could be? And is the order of this as well thought out as it could be? Though I love the concept of what we're trying to do and what we're trying to put together, I just, this is, this is just bugging me a little bit. And I know there's no answer, because this is the funding you guys have requested, we've already approved it from the budget, we can't really go back on that at this point. But I do hope that in the next false swoop, that we don't do another little incremental, ooh, let's just make fifth grade whole. Instead, we just say, this is what we, we as Fairfield are going to go to second grade, and we are first grade, and we're going to do it, and we're going to do it right, and we're going to redo the whole thing, and we're going to do immersion, and we're going to do whatever, and we do it. And we don't waste, and I don't want to say the wrong word, but like dilly-dally around for another 10 years.
I would also like to say, though, that I'm sure we all know somebody, or perhaps someone is even sitting here, who will raise his or her hand and say, I took X years of world language, Spanish, French, or whatever, and I can't say a thing. We've all heard people say that. And again, I'm sure there's somebody here who would say the very same thing. Our new program emphasizing the fourth grade, the fifth grade, the sixth grade, the seventh grade, we are promoting speaking. We are promoting the communication skills, interpersonal, presentational, and interpretive.
No, I get it. I get that. I'm just saying, frequency, like if we're going to do it, I would prefer that we do it, and we do it right, and you speak every day, and we start early, and we do the whole thing. I think this little steps, I just, that's not the way I would do it. But of course, I'm not going to speak on behalf of this board and this district. If we think this is the right way to go, one person doesn't matter. But I'm just saying, from my perspective, if we're going to do it, I would support doing it in a false swoop and doing it right. And I would say that in terms of cutting and teaching less in a given year, I don't know that that makes somebody more fluent, right? I would actually disagree with that. I would say doing less and doing it slower in smaller chunks over a longer period of time reduces fluency versus immersing, immersing them in concepts and repeating it over and over and over again.
Right. But that's really what this is all about. It's about having the time to do the activities with the students, having them create a dialogue, having them even Skype. I mean, all these things are now available, so we will have more time to go deeper into what we're doing with our students, rather than often just rushing through it. I've got to get to the end of the marking period. I've got to get to the end of the semester in the high school. I've got to get to the end of the year. So this does allow us to put more emphasis on the skills.
Okay. Well, I think I've made my point, so I just, I don't want to go into it.
I just want to follow up, going back to the students and learners. And I think one of the most exciting differences is we're focusing on the student learning, the learning, the learners. What are the learners going to be able to do?
No, I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying that the, unless you're going to tell me that instead of 25 words being shared in the first unit, that now we're tripling it because we're spending so much more time on it. But if we're just going to practice the same 25 words for a longer period of time, then, you see what I'm saying? I don't know how you're actually going to execute it, but as long as you're, what you're saying is that it's going to be deeper, broader, and we're going to do more of it, and they're going to be more fluent at the end of it, then that's wonderful. I don't know how you're going to execute it, so I can't say. But, you know, on that topic, you know the feeling. The next question for me is on the textbooks, if we can, because I did take some time to take a look at this. And I have to say that the, some of the textbooks that you guys took a look at have very, very different approaches, I felt, from taking a look at them, from learning. And I know you're recommending this. I can see why. I know the explanation is it's more current, it's more modern, it has more cultural items in there. Although a lot of the cultural items are all English-based. There's a lot more discussion of those things within English, at least in the first book. This one seems to be more traditional in its approach to laying out what the six pronouns are, understanding what they are, understanding, you know, formal versus informal, and a more grammatical approach versus this is a lot of cultural, it's almost like phrases, like let me teach you a phrase without teaching the individual words within it as a focus of this text. So again, this is a very different approach, and I would just caution, because when, at least I as a student and as a learner use a textbook, I use it as a reference. I use it as a reference to understand things that maybe I didn't understand when I heard them in class said or discussed. I want it as a reference so that I can go back, review it, and make sure I really fully understand that. So to me, the more detailed a text, the better, because nobody really reads a textbook, but they use it to look up stuff that they didn't get, or reinforce stuff that they didn't get. And I'm concerned that this is an interesting cultural presentation of what's going on in the country, but isn't necessarily a world language teaching text so much as this one is, and certainly isn't as user-friendly as this. So that's my comment on the two texts, that if I were to learn it, I would much prefer to have this in my, you know, on my desk, just as a just-in-case, rather than a this. Though this is probably more interesting to read, you know, at night, because it has like a lot of interesting little facts in there. And then my last comment is going to be on Mandarin. Are we using Pinyin for our teaching, or are we not at this point? Have we decided as a district?
That's something we are still working on with the teachers. We are using, at this point, a combination of the two. We still need to really consider what would be the most appropriate for our students at this point.
So we still don't know. Okay. And in terms of the approach, I assume the approach is going to be the same, then? It's the same framework that you're using for all the others? And the textbook that we currently have addresses that appropriately?
It's also the EMC textbook, so it's the same publisher as the two books that we are recommending.
Okay. So then I would have the same concern across all the languages, because it's going to be the same approach, then. And is EMC based in Pinyin or another?
It's a combination. I think all of the American textbooks are a combination. They start off with very little Pinyin, and then they move forward.
So it is Pinyin-based? It's not the other?
No, it is, it is not Pinyin-based. It starts, there's a combination at the beginning, and they progress throughout the levels.
You mean using characters?
Right.
Okay. But the English pronunciation is Pinyin versus the old, I can't even remember like what the name of it is, but, you know, like they would pronounce, spell things differently using English.
This might be a point where I could reach out to our Chinese teacher. Thank you.
So is this a lifeline that you're sending out there? So if the teacher could come forward and use the microphone at the podium so that the world audience on Fair TV can hear you? Thank you.
I'm so sorry to have to bring you up to speak.
Did you understand the question?
Sure. So our two Chinese teachers, Rose Healy and Ja, but I can't pronounce her last name yet, but I've got the Ja.
I'm Rose Healy. I teach at the World High School.
Hello, my name is Ja, and the last name is Zhong. I'm teaching at Lao Lo High.
To answer your question, it is teaching in Pinyin halfway, most of, basically in the text, they have a Chinese character, and on the other side is Pinyin. So for students who have the choice to learn Pinyin, they probably will look at on Pinyin side. But for students who are determined to learn Chinese characters, they will have eyes on this side. So the textbook currently we use provides both opportunities for all the students, all the learners.
Okay.
And as a teacher, we teach both sides. We always said, we give them information on both sides. And for students who are heritage students or natural born in here, so they have the choice to learn. But the goal is communication, how to communicate in Chinese language, in verbal and speaking, typing, especially right now, we can use computer to type. So once more, you can speak Pinyin, you can identify Chinese characters, will make them life easier to learn, and to learn deeper about Chinese language and culture. So for now, we're doing both, and we emphasize on, again, we not want they're crippled for only learn one side. But again, we have emphasized, our emphasis is communication. Can we speak? Can we deliver what you want to say? For example, about your age, about who I, who am I? So they can speak. But the reading, yes, they can learn about.
May I ask also, are you doing simplified characters, or that you, simplified?
Simplified.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Simplified.
That's easy. And are you going to be teaching the order of stroke as well?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, good.
Other radicals, water, stroke, and the correct writing, that's a very basic, we believe, we all believe, it's a very strong foundation as a language, as Chinese language. But also, we recognize the difficulty for the kids.
Oh, yeah.
So for the students. So we really have a both approach.
And I assume that there's going to be a lot of audio, because probably the auditory part of it is the most difficult. If you're teaching kids that are coming in high school, they're not used to the different four sounds.
Yeah.
That's going to be.
Yeah. Again, we.
Because we don't have labs, right? We don't have language labs.
No, but we use a lot of audio tape, YouTube, Youtuber, YouTube. And also, the book we're using right now, we do have little clips to show. So it's definitely, it's very audio and very visual.
Can I see at some point the book that goes with it? Yeah? That'd be great. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Is that it, Mrs. Lou McCormick, or do you have other questions?
Oh, I think that was enough.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other hands up? If not, Ms. Carnell?
Thank you for the presentation. And you're the expert, so this is a question, and by the way, I am one of those that studied Spanish and cannot speak a word, so I'm guilty. It looks like in grades four and five, we're talking about twice a week for 25 minutes. Has it ever been done where they've looked at it and said, maybe we're better off doing it four times a week in fifth grade, as opposed to breaking it down? Or why break it down? So I'm just curious to understand that.
It's definitely something to consider. There are multiple things that we would need to discuss with the Director of Elementary Ed in terms of scheduling, and it hasn't been discussed. It could be discussed.
I guess my question is, would, do you think it would be a better way for students or learners to learn a language if it's, instead of twice a week, if it was done four times a week, even if it started a grade later?
There is research that talks about the frequency of meeting with the classes, as well as the number of minutes provided for each time. You still want to know if I think it would be better?
Well, I guess, I guess I'm trying to understand if there's been stats. What is the answer? What are they saying is a more?
The answer is more is better.
Early and frequent.
No, I know the early and frequent, but we're not, okay, let me try it a different way. I've, my son is in sixth grade. Last year, I'd say to him, well, how was Spanish? Well, I didn't have it for three weeks. Well, I don't understand. Well, they pulled us out for this, or we had gym, or we had. So the point is, they lose so much momentum. That's, I think, what I'm trying to say. So why don't we change it? If it is shown that it's more productive for the learners, why aren't we just doing it in fifth grade four times a week? I guess that's where I'm stuck.
Yeah. I think that that's a topic we need to have with our colleagues at the elementary level. It is, right now, the way it is scheduled, and it's with all of their other specials or electives, art and music and so on. It's the way the elementary schedule is set up right now. But when, one of the things, we had promised the board we would do this summer is to begin to really develop a proposal for an elementary program. And so one of the things we'll be looking at very carefully is what can we do, what grades can we offer, and so on. And we'll be coming back next year with a proposal, you know, a well-developed proposal for elementary. But I think the schedule is as it is at this point in time at the elementary school.
I think I'm walking. Just don't say in Spanish. So when you're saying come back with a new schedule, you mean all of the curriculum, not necessarily just the language piece of the elementary?
Well, we had told the board when we came, we would develop, we would, we would come back to you with a way of developing the elementary program. But we need the summer to start working on that. We haven't had the time to do that. I can't speak for the elementary schedule, because I only do secondary.
Where's the boss? Right, I know. I guess the question is, and I totally appreciate what you're all saying, if we're doing, you know, if we're rolling out a new world language, why aren't we taking that into consideration? I guess, to Ms. Lou McCormick's point, why are we piecemealing it? We're trying to fix certain levels, but yet we're not addressing the fourth and fifth grade, which is really building the foundation of the learning of the language going forward.
If I can comment on this, this was, this question and debate started last November when the original proposal came to us. And I have no doubt that the world language staff and this entire board would have preferred to put into the budget a K-12 program all at once. But there was a calculation made as to trying to implement this over perhaps three budget years, so that we could effectively get it implemented, as opposed to a very big number this year that might be a target for cutting out it entirely. So this was a debate that started, it continued during the budget time, and is a correct debate, because it's a concern of ours.
I'm not following you at all, Mr. Dwyer. My question is, not looking for more money, not looking at starting at kindergarten, which would be wonderful, we could. I'm just trying to understand, if we're rolling out a new curriculum going forward, why aren't we combining and giving it four days a week in the fifth grade? I don't think that's more of a money issue, unless I'm missing something. I didn't bring up kindergarten.
Ms. Parks?
I think the best answer to that question is, we looked at a lot of different things. We had a lot of conversations about what to do, because as you know, we had cuts to world language. We had many conversations about what to do at the elementary level. Our focus in bringing this new curriculum
Our focus in bringing this new curriculum was to do vertical and horizontal alignment as well as increase the frequency and time in sixth grade. And we knew that would have budgetary implications. We know that we want to look at the elementary and I think we just felt we didn't want to eliminate the world language from any other of the grades. So we'd leave it as it is and then really look at it more thoroughly because if we do develop a program from K through five, let's say, it's going to definitely impact what we do from sixth through 12. So we just decided, well, we would chunk it. We wouldn't cut back anymore in the elementary as long as we have our foot in the door, so to speak, in grades four and five. We want to keep it there and expand beyond that rather than remove it. So there's a lot of, we could potentially have done that, but we made the choice not to and to look at K to five as a separate entity as we move forward because we knew it would have huge budgetary implications to try to develop a program at this time that we didn't feel we were ready to fund. Best answer I can give.
And I'd like to add to that because that's how I took it as well. And I'd like to just say that the comment from the chair regarding budgetary constraints, I would like to disagree with that. I think if we had been ready to do something, we could have found the money. I will take the reason that we didn't do it is because we were not prepared yet to revamp the entire elementary school. And to me, that is a legitimate reason versus saying that we don't have the budget. I think if we can find an outstanding way to address the solution, we can find the budget numbers. There are priorities that we set and if we say that world language is a priority, then we will find the money. We have a lot, we have a huge budget, a big number. And if we need to find a million dollars and we want to find a million dollars, then we can find a million dollars. And so I don't want that to be an obstacle for us to develop an elementary program because I think that would be a shame.
Any other comments, Ms. Carnell?
I wasn't, thank you. So I guess my question, I hope, is that the elementary program will be looked at sooner than later. And if it comes up, maybe next year on our budget, we can.
For the benefit of the audiotape, nodding of the heads doesn't really record very well.
Yes, thank you. Just the last question, I think, and I'm sorry, one of you, I believe, said, if I followed it correctly, that one of the reasons we're using books, not sure you even meant these in particular, was because the teachers wanted the books, that it would have been done differently? I'm just trying to understand that. Please.
I think at this point, we're trying to transition. And so initially, it's helpful for teachers to have some material at hand. As we move forward, there are so many materials available on the internet. There are so many authentic videos and movies and the whole nine yards. But initially, to move it step by step, and the EMC materials that we are considering have videos, they have an iSong program, they do news clips three times a week. So they are continually, monthly and weekly, expanding the authentic materials that we will have at hand. And because these are not unit-specific to the textbook, because we are thematic, we can choose, take and choose and pick and choose the materials that we find are most appropriate and create level-appropriate activities out of them.
I think a book is a good idea. I was just trying, thank you very much.
Any other, Mr. Llewellyn?
A quick question, and forgive me, I came in late, so I missed a portion of your presentation. The textbook that we're discussing, or the textbooks that we're discussing, are they more traditional or are they more thematic? I mean, are they developed around the theme and are they going to plug in perfectly? Or are they more of a traditional textbook that's going to need to be, as you just said, kind of picked and chosen from?
One of the dilemmas with a theme-based curriculum is there is no textbook that's perfectly aligned to it. That's why so many of the districts that Eileen mentioned just don't use a textbook. What we look for, we look for a textbook is alignment to our curriculum. So we looked for, we looked at textbooks in terms of how well are they aligned to the most recent curriculum standards that we're using. And we're using the ones that were developed last fall. Very often textbook publishers, and there are fewer and fewer textbook publishers these days, but what they often do is take an older book and put a new cover on it and insert a few new pages and republish it as a newer edition. And what we found, for example, for the Realidades book, which is one of the Spanish books we looked at, is that the sales rep actually admitted to us that 90% of the book we're looking at was from the 2004 edition, which means all the supplemental, the videos were also dated. We didn't think it wise to spend money on a book that was, is really 11 years old, essentially. So we looked at, the books we selected are the two, in Spanish and French, are the two most recent publications by publishers who actually created the textbooks from scratch based on the new standards. This is similar to what we discovered when we looked for math books. The middle school math books we recommended were built, were written from scratch, not revised versions of an older book. And so we believe these books are the closest aligned to the curriculum that the teachers have written. They are not perfectly aligned. There is no such book. But we will be able to use the supplemental materials, such as Eileen just described, to allow, and it's a six-year license they're giving us for those supplemental materials with these books included in the cost, that will allow us to supplement it and address some of the other issues in the curriculum that do come with the themes.
And is part of that supplement that's given standardized testing that would be measurable across all users of that textbook? Or are our tests going to be district tests more so?
I may just, I'll let her answer part of that. But the tests we referred to, the national tests we referred to, are criterion reference tests that are written by the national organizations in those languages. So we're recommending the use of those and we have included those in the budget as well. The teachers will be writing common assessments and I'll let Eileen address that part of it.
All right, thank you.
So part of our summer work will be to create the common assessment and doing it in backward design. So we'll create the assessments based on the five Cs and the three Ps and the interpersonal and so on. And then create those assessments, common assessments, common rubrics, and then create the implementation guide so we know exactly where we're taking our students. But they will be common assessments across the languages.
And those common assessments will not be something that's part of that purpose of the textbook, though? They will not be incorporating one of those license fees, or will they?
Yeah, we have, we will have access to a multitude of resources that the book will provide us. The things that I mentioned, which are the most exciting, but also there are the online workbooks, there are the online audio pieces, there are the online, well, online for the teachers to access, but the testing materials as well.
Okay.
So it is a complete package.
Okay, so traditional workbooks will be replaced with online workbooks that will be printable?
Right, everything is printable.
Got it. Okay, thank you very much.
If I can go to the public in the event there's anybody here that would like to make a comment on the world language curriculum? Please step forward, state your name and address.
Hi, Trisha Donovan Fairfield. I'd just like to thank everyone for their hard work. I'm so thrilled that in sixth grade, our students will have the choice of French and Spanish and that it will be a full period. I think that's really great. My one question to you is, you mentioned that the textbook is more support for the teachers in the transition period. And as a parent and as a learner who did learn a foreign language fluently and still uses it today, I, when I support my students at home, I'm constantly pulling out my former textbooks and helping them, giving them examples because there don't seem to be enough exercises for them to practice language skills, the actual grammar skills. And I was wondering how you were going to do that? And is there a way that we can support the students in helping them to practice and have a resource that they can access, especially if they're going to move forward in the language? It's something that you refer to time and time again and so many things in language are hierarchical and you use throughout those four years that you're studying them. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Suzanne Meska, 123 Rygate Road. Thank you. It's amazing, although honestly, I find the ninth through 12 curriculum in world language already amazing. To watch a sophomore doing Socratic seminars in Spanish blew me away. I am so impressed with what you've all been able to do. I think it's fabulous that we're going to take 10 and 20 and create the continuation down to start it at the middle school level so that we have the consistency. I've been asking for consistency, not necessarily just in world language, but I think it's fabulous that all the kids are going to come in at that same, you know, jumping point. I would think the high school teachers are going to be very excited to get these students in the position that they are. I'm sure I am speaking as a parent of someone who had a teacher be very unhappy with the language skills this week. So I'm sure she will be very happy to see that her middle school students coming in will be better prepared. So thank you. It's a great job.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Christine Vitale, 254 Vernon Hill Road. About four or five years ago, I was at a budget meeting and I heard RTN members say that all we really need to spend money on is reading, writing and arithmetic. World language really wasn't that important in terms of putting the money there. And we saw the budget get cut and we saw our world language program get cut. And I don't think anyone, any parent who was passionate about education was happy about that. I know many people in this room probably ran for the Board of Education to kind of turn that around. So this is a very happy day for me. I have a senior who is graduating. She took the AP exam in Spanish. Been very happy with the education she's received. She wants to continue on in college, taking a world language. So I think that's a testament to the education she's gotten here in town. I'm excited for my incoming ninth grader, for the curriculum that is ahead of her. And I just would ask those board members who are passionate about bringing this to the elementary school level to advocate in front of town bodies. Because you may think the money's there, but I think that you need to put the money where your mouth is and get out there and let other people in this town know that this is where the money needs to go. Because I think our teachers, they, the passion's been there, the commitment's been there for years. So to say that they're dilly-dalling around that is really, I think, unfair and not really giving credit for the hard work that they've done putting this curriculum together and the hard work that they've done over the last five years, keeping world language in the forefront. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see anybody else coming forward. You mentioned a lot of people in your PowerPoint of team members that helped develop this. I suspect some of them in the audience, do you want to have them stand so that we can properly thank them?
World language teachers?
Thank you. Now, this will be brought forward at our next meeting for a vote. There will be two votes. One relates to approving the curriculum documents and the other relates to approving the textbooks. So this will be on the next agenda. Our next business item is presentation of the, wait a second, let me get my order here. Yeah, policy. So the recommended motion on the policy is that the Board of Education approve Policy 4118.5, Personnel FPS Acceptable Use Policy. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, do I have a second? Ms. Carnell, do you have any comments that you wish to make on the policy, Ms. Maxon Cannelly?
Not really at this time. I know I had received some questions from board members at the last meeting. So I just want to provide a little bit of feedback on that and then just open it up for questions. The first, again, was regarding the crafting of the language for this. And I had just wanted to re-clarify that this was language crafted by our attorneys so that there was a point made about constitutionality of it and that this was crafted by a lawyer to begin with. I'm not saying that those aren't still debatable topics as we have done many times in policy. But again, I did ask about that specifically. We did, I did talk briefly with Mrs. Parks regarding the title for data retention, which is on page two of the policy, and that this really is an appropriate title. I was trying to recall all of our conversation in policy. The language does deal with how data will be retained, though not specifically the length, which, considering that the state is working to create a new set of rules for that and we don't want to have to bring this policy right back up immediately again, we prefer to leave it with the language as it is right now. But again, that's up to the wish of the board. Another issue had been raised regarding having a link available to parents regarding this and that there is, there, pardon me, I'm just trying to read my notes. This is something that we are in the process of doing. And then I'll leave that at that and just open it up for board comments.
Ms. Carnell, do you have any comments that you want to make?
I'm good for now, thanks.
Okay. Any questions from board members on this policy? Any questions from board members on this policy? Okay, any members of the public that wish to come forward to comment on this prior to vote? Don't all rush down. Okay, thank you. Then back to the board. If we're ready for action on the motion that the Board of Education approve Policy 4118.5, Personnel FPS Acceptable Use Policy. All in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous with eight present. Thank you. The next item of business is the first reading of the draft district improvement plan that Mrs. Parks will go over and then we can have further conversation. I know the concept of first reading and that the next board meeting is when we vote. Because of the importance of this document over multiple years, we'll actually have a second reading on June 9th. We'll have the public meeting on June 10th that we've advertised. And then this will be up for vote at the second meeting in June so that there will be several more shots at the apple, if you will. So with that as a comment, what do you wish to do in terms of walking us through the document?
Well, I know that you received it before. You had quite a bit of discussion. There were a lot of questions. So I thought I would walk through it relatively quickly to let you know what we did change as a result of some of your questions and comments and how it is in a different form than when you saw it last time. Before I do that, I just wanted to mention that Mrs. Cannelly talked about data retention and I think Mr. Llewellyn asked us about that and we do have. I sent an email out to you.
I saw that, thank you.
So you should be able to access. So we did it as a link just so when the legislative changes occur, it's there. We don't have to change stuff. So it is there. So regarding the district improvement plan, we made some changes in formatting. We had an appendix A and appendix B mentioned previously. We changed that. It's still the same material, but we called it the sections three and four. So that was a very minor change that did not come out of your meeting. As we worked on it, we just said, oh, this doesn't make sense. Some of the changes, as I flip through the document, on page... Oh, I also wanted to make a comment on the strategies. I know someone in the public commented that they were concerned about the order. But understand that the strategies are not listed in any order of priority. They're just a list. So if it's at the bottom, it doesn't mean it's less important. Understand that we will have to pick which actions we're going to work on from year to year. So it really, they're just a list. Their order is not in any order of priority. So if you go to page 16, which is, that used to be appendix A. We've now just called it the section on performance indicators and data measures. There's a couple of changes there. There's a couple of changes there. One is actually on page 17. We added an additional indicator. It's number 10, so it changed the numbering for all the rest. We inserted it there. It's AP Calculus and Multi-V variable Calculus Participation. And we included that because we felt that using that as an indicator, the percentage of graduating students that successfully completed at least one AP Calculus or Multi-V variable Calculus course by graduation would be an indicator of students who are being accelerated in math, so we could start to measure how many, what percentage of each class are we actually successfully accelerating because they continue. So, we added that indicator. You didn't see that on the prior one. And on the next page, page 18, School Climate Survey, when we actually started looking at baseline data, we realized in the prior plan, we had listed it as percentage of students answering agree or strongly agree. And we found that we did not have, the data was not reported back to us in that form, and so we would have had to go through a lot of Excel sheets and count answers. So, instead, we looked at how we did have the data reported and we are, the indicator will actually be the average student responses on a scale of one to four, being one strongly disagree, agree up to four, which is strongly agree, to all student responses about safety and social, emotional well-being and citizenship. So, it's just a different way of measuring the same responses, because the other method, the way the survey was reported back to us was, would be way too time-consuming. If you go on to the descriptions, Student Performance Indicator Descriptions, we added one, and that is on page 21. We defined a capstone experience, which was a request. And then, I think, wait, there's more. There was a question on page 27. Someone, one of the members of the Board requested, I don't remember who, but for better, a better explanation of two dash six under Teams Improvement Plans regarding the Walter Fitzgerald campus. We changed the language. It used to say, "Develop capacity of Walter Fitzgerald campus to attract students from other school districts on a tuition basis," which really, the question was, well, how are we doing that? So, we changed it to, "Use best practice models to create a top-notch alternative high school program," which I think more clearly explains what we're trying to do. And that came from your suggestions. And then, the big change comes in Section Four. The last time you saw the plan, we did not have baseline data, nor did we have targets. So, if you look at the whole pages 31 to 40, we have all of the student performance indicators listed. We have in the second to the last column on the right, we have the baseline data, which we calculated for all those that we have the data available. If it's not available, we've listed when it will be available. And then, in the far-right column, for that baseline data, which is available, we set targets. And we did all of that in our district data team with all of the individuals responsible for those areas, and they are here tonight if you have questions. And I believe that's everything.
In terms of the changes?
In terms of changes, yes. So, I'll answer any questions.
So, if we're ready for Q and A, Mrs. Loomcormick.
So, I guess I'll start from where we just left off.
Okay.
So, I see, I think this would be, will be very powerful. This is like, just a ton of data that we're putting together, and all of it is interesting to see. Though, I think it would have been nice to try to get some sort of like a cumulative one, like, I don't know if the SAT is the right one, but it probably should be on here because all of these kind of feed into how do you do on this one test, that we kind of teach to, but we really don't, but is a national measure that everybody acknowledges. So, that might be nice to see how we do. And I hate to add another metric, but we don't really have like cumulative ones, and I think we need to have some, because otherwise, this is a lot of detail.
So, I think to answer your question, currently, we're sort of in that progressive assessment void. So, Sback is now really being implemented. We don't have any ideas from the state in terms of baseline data or targets. I imagine that will eventually appear on this list. SAT is another really good question that we're pursuing. There is a lot of talk at the state level of eliminating Sback in grade 11 and replacing it with SAT.
Yeah, right.
So, we're kind of, we haven't put that in here because we knew we wouldn't have baseline data. We have no idea how to set targets, but that will appear on here once the state can give us that information. Because that will be a year-to-year assessment.
And I would say that on all your I-readies, and I know this is going to be of interest to people with elementary school kids, you have all of the percent above grade level. It would also be interesting to see the percent at advanced level, just like we do for all of the other ones. I think we have them for the district common assessments, for everything else, but we just don't have, but we should have it for I-ready, if we're going to look across the line and see. I think that would be good also for consistency. And then, this is a big, because I imagine you're going to have some massive spreadsheet that's going to input all this data. What would be, I think, really cool and very kind of progressive is to put this on our website, you know, as like a thing you can pull down. And beneath each of these, I would imagine each of the individual schools are actually feeding their information to come up with the district target. So, to be able to like click on that, and then down comes all of the whatever number of schools with each of their individual targets, and you can see where their baseline was, where their target is, and how that averages up to the total. Because I think that would be a very powerful tool, as opposed to having to report each of the individual schools on this common sheet, if we just have the backup material for if we ever wanted to say, okay, let's understand what happened to, you know, Riverfield or whatever. You can pull all the data and aggregate that together and compare it historically, just looking forward in time to make the information useful. And then, the other one, which, I know, I hate to say this, but I think it's really important. I saw this, I think, in West Hartford. They had done it very well, is the subsets of students. I know we have the free and reduced lunch, which is one population, which is what, I don't, what percentage of the population is that? I don't know, 7% or something?
I, off the top of my head, I don't. Do we have any administrators here who know the free and reduced? Who does Title One?
I'll just make up an, let's say it's seven percent.
We have somebody that will get you that answer.
Yes, we can get you that information for sure.
So, it would be interesting to see the different groups, because I remember a few of the other ones that they had had was like male, female. I think that's a really interesting one.
So, I would comment on that if I may. We have, when we, when we had an assessment, CAPT and CMT, that we could really just aggregate the scores and look at the, all of the different subgroups, we really found that we did not have discrepancies among any subgroups other than free and reduced and non-free and reduced. So, that's where the achievement gap lies, not by gender, not by ethnic or minority groups listed as subgroups. It was just among the socioeconomic groups, which is why we've chosen to report that, because our goal is to eliminate the achievement gap.
No, I understand that, but these other issues are actually broad issues that are recognized kind of across the country. There is something going on between the boys and girls and how well the boys are actually doing within schools these days, given the way the teaching is and the focus. And it would be great to show that, you know what, that's not happening in Fairfield, and that would be fine, but I think it's not something either that we should not pay attention to, because I think it is a national issue. And so, I think the male, female thing is very interesting. The other thing that, you know, the minority thing, I know you say that that's not an issue, but we may find that certain pockets of minorities do have issues and other pockets don't have issues. But you know, that's really interesting, and then you have to ask why. And then, so when you look at how the minorities do, is there really a problem or is there not? Well, there may be a bigger problem than you think in certain areas, and there may be a smaller problem, but I think that kind of disclosure is interesting, because again, that's a national discussion that's being had. The other one that's a big national discussion, that I know is a sensitive topic for many, but it's out there, is how are some of our brightest young learners doing? There's a big discussion that a lot of them are being neglected and left behind. And is that happening in Fairfield or not? Maybe it's not, and that would be wonderful, but maybe it is. Maybe we do follow the national trend, and are we tracking that as well? So, covering the full rainbow of issues, to understand, since we're putting together this awesome matrix, to cover it all and be able to cut the data, because if we have all the data, let's set it up upfront so that we can really manipulate and understand how we're doing. Like this kind of, you know, my strategic profile that I'm so hung up about, this is it. I mean, this is, we want to understand where we are and where we're going, and that's, to me, really important, and being able to manipulate the data so that we can see and answer the questions upon that. That would be wonderful. Oh, and I have one more thing that I have to say, because that was a big picture one, is I talked about the changes before. You have absolute targets, so a member I had said, couldn't we not instead say that 100% of the schools have to increase by 5% or 10%? Let's measure the change instead of these general targets. I don't know what consideration that's had or not. To some extent, maybe that's addressed if we can actually do the pull-down with individual targets for each school. But if we don't, I kind of want to go back to saying that if we were to have a target, I'd like to somehow bring accountability to each school within our district measure, rather than letting the tops and the bottom average each other out.
So, I can address that as well. So, we just do, we do things almost the flip of what you described. So, we have developed a district improvement plan, and every school must have, must then design a school improvement plan that's aligned to the district improvement plan, and their targets have to be set based on the district targets, not the other way around. So, each school will have their own school improvement plan in which they will report what is their baseline data and what is their target. And I think it's important to point out that we worked very, very hard when we implemented the new teacher evaluation plan, because as you know, teacher goals have to be aligned to student scores on assessments. And we did exactly what you've been asking about. We didn't say 80% of our students will attain a score of 90, because what about those other 20? So, we really worked with the teachers to say, every student will improve their performance on such and such an assessment by this much, every student. So, if you're in the middle, you're improving. If you're at the top, you're improving. If you're at the bottom, you're improving. And all of their teacher evaluation ratings are based on that. So, and that's all tied to what does the school need to do to get to this target that will help the district get to its target. So, it really is aligned in exactly the way that you've been asking.
Okay, but you did it top-down.
We set the targets at the top, yes, and set the areas that we identified as a district that everybody has to work on. Now, the schools can choose additional areas to work on, but they have to work on the targets that we set. And I think in here, they're pretty comprehensive. I don't think there is, they can-
Oh, yeah, 7 million targets. All right, so each school has been setting a target for each of these.
Yep.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Other questions or comments from board members? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
Thank you. A couple of things I wanted to ask about. First of all, just as a statement of history on page three, I had meant to say this last time and got caught up in other things and never came back to it, but four lines down regarding the tremendous work of the Mission and Goals Subcommittee, there isn't just to be historically accurate, there is an intermediate step here that I thought was worth including, which is that it did come before the Policy Committee. These were policies that were approved, and so they did the additional work of working with the Policy Committee as we rehashed it and did some reworking and reordering, so that when it came before the full Board, that was, at that point, a little bit of combined effort with the Policy Committee. Again, the Subcommittee did tremendous work and really stuck with it. So, how that gets worked in wasn't, I leave that up to you, but I did just think for the purpose of the introduction, being accurate, that that should be in there.
It is true that between January of 14 and March of, whatever the dates are, there was a tremendous amount of work on the Policy Committee level, and there ought to be a sentence that reflects that.
Right, and with the Subcommittee, I mean, they stuck with it right all the way through before it came before the full Board. So, that was one point, I'm sorry, now I have to find the pages of my others. On, sorry, I had a, let me come back to it. Sorry, if I had little yellow stickies, I would have found these much more quickly. On, and on that same topic, actually, sort of on page 28, I had mentioned this last time, but it was in with a few others. It seems to me that at some point in here, there is at least one thing specifically that should be involving the Board of Ed, and that is work in, I have this under technology, for example, that's what made me think of it, when it says, "Implement a consistent bring-your-own-device program." But just the idea that of communication between Central Office and the Policy Committee on perhaps necessary policy changes to achieve parts of this, I didn't know if that was deliberately left out for a reason or-
No, yes, you had mentioned it the last meeting, but we already did that.
No, that's, that's what made me think of it, that I didn't know if there was anything else in here where you thought or you don't believe so.
That lengthy acceptable use policy that you passed tonight and the previous student one, that's where we got the language to allow us to go forward with a bring-your-own-device to school. So, I think we have what we need in place. What we don't have yet is the teacher expertise to incorporate all of that and the actual know which device to go with. So, we're hoping-
So, you thought that was sufficient, that there's not, would be nothing else in here that that support's needed?
I think it's there. I don't think we need more policy.
All right, that's fine with me. I had a question on page 31. In terms of the four-year and six-year graduation rates, this is under assessment number two, I had a, because obviously, those are high 2020 targets. And my question was regarding, obviously, we have 21-year-olds, for example, that will remain in the system, which could have quite an impact on those numbers in a way that isn't a negative impact, and so that was a concern of mine.
So, you picked up on another change that I forgot to mention.
Okay.
So, thank you for that. In the prior version that you saw, we had selected four-year graduation rate, and by the way, the state has a very complicated way of calculating these, so we just reach out to the state to get their numbers. We did not calculate these numbers on our own. We, the state has in the past, and that's part of the strategic school profiles that Mrs. Loomcormick has been asking about, they calculated a four-year graduation and a five-year graduation rate. They are no longer doing a five-year graduation rate. So, when I went to our IT department, we have a couple of individuals that are data Amy Germano went to the state website to get the manual on how to calculate the five-year graduation rate, and it was 32 pages. So, I told her, well, let's hold off on that. And then, I just went to a meeting two Fridays ago where we had, I heard a presentation by the new interim Bureau Chief for Data Assessment and Accountability, and he indicated that they are no longer going to be doing a five-year graduation rate, that they've looked at a lot of data and they feel that the six-year graduation rate is better, because it does include students who persist in school to graduate and get a diploma. It doesn't include any non-school diplomas. And they also looked at seven-year graduation rate and felt that that was not as good a data- data point as the six-year graduation rate. So we changed from the five-year to the six-year. They will be producing that number for the class of 2012, so it'll be a 2014 number in June. So we'll have it. So it'll actually relate to the graduating class of 2012, but the kids who were in that class and actually managed to graduate by 2014. And they'll report that every year, so we can add that data to, to this.
And so that percentage number would be out of four-year-plus seniors still in the system? How many of them graduate at the, by the six-year point? So that percentage is out of that, not out of the total class?
Nope, it's the, so however many kids were in the, so when a student enters kindergarten, they're assigned a graduation year.
Right.
Which is based on, well, kindergarten, 13 years. And that, that graduation year stays with them no matter how long they stay in the system. So the percentage of six-year graduation rates is the percentage of the students who started in that kindergarten class who graduate in six years. Yes.
Okay.
And it's also very complicated how they calculate it, but they'll be calculating it. So it'll be a standard for us to use year to year with the same type of calculation.
Okay. I guess I'm still concerned about where that top number, the ones who don't make it at the six-year point, and how many of it is because of special needs in terms of how that's impacting the number. But I guess we'll kind of be able to discuss that better when you actually have some real baseline data first.
Yeah, and he did discuss that, and I can't remember all of the, the details of his answer, but this six-year graduation includes a large number of students who can, who have until 21 to graduate. Whatever happened that they felt the seven-year data was less reliable than the six-year, so that's why they went with that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I also had a question on number five, the career and tech ed, where I might be interested, I'm not, the baseline data here obviously is predicated on a completely different schedule, I assume. Or was this predicated on course requests?
So it is, I've got written here how this was calculated. So number five. So basically, what we did is the State Department of Education lists courses that they are encouraging non-traditional students to take. So that would be business management and application of mechanics, I guess, application, different mechanics classes, intro to computer technology, electricity, intro to communication and electronic systems, transportation, there's a long list. And so each course, they, they indicate what the traditional student is, meaning male or female. So for each of those courses, we had to calculate, figure out what was the total number of unique students, and how many were male and how many were female. And so in the courses that are predominantly male, we took the females as the non-traditional. In the courses that are predominantly female, we take the males that are non-traditional. We add them up, and we determine the percentage. And those are for enrollment in June of 2014. So they're last year's numbers. So they were actual students who, who were in those classes and completed the courses.
Okay, let me ask the question differently.
Yeah.
If we, by virtue of the new high school schedule, achieve the 2020 target within a year, might that then be revisited? I.e., it's, I'm not saying they don't do a great job of recruiting, but might it not be possible that the new high school schedule alone is responsible for an increase in some of the numbers? And so that then the, the push to drive that, you know, further, that that might be one that needs to be reevaluated? Because it's an unknown in terms of what, just what will the impact of the schedule be?
Potentially, but it is, it's a, it's a large number of students.
It is. I, that's, that's why it was just a question. Might that be something worthy of a second look?
Certainly, we'll look at, we'll, if we meet our target in a year, we're going to reset it.
So that's all I wanted to know.
Absolutely, for any one of these, any one of these.
Okay. Then, I think this is my last question, and if I find anything else, I'll defer and come back to me. In looking at all of these district common assessments, so this is starting on page 34, and definitely with all of the tests, I was wondering how the Central Office made the decision of, because I believe we're reading this, that we'll be comparing the performance of one second grade to the subsequent year's second grade, as opposed to following a cohort of students. So that how did the second graders do on the, on, again, I'm not positive what all the district common assessments are, but of this first grade writing and then second grade writing, that the comparison would involve following the cohort and that that's the data, as opposed to, well, this year's first grade versus the subsequent year's first grade? I'm sure that was a discussion. I was curious if you could share, how was that decision made?
Well, I will turn to a curriculum leader and ask if there's anyone who could answer that.
They're doing a marvelous job of looking at each other.
I know.
Don't all rest down at once.
Sure, Meg can do that.
I mean, well, I mean, really, it goes from reading, then, I mean, writing, reading on the star, math with the i-ready, so, I mean, it's a, a point that could go to three different areas.
i-ready's a little complicated, so I'm not going to try to handle that, but I'm sure one of our math experts can do that for us.
We did have that exact conversation at the district data team, the cohort versus the grade level. I think we, we decided for right now to, to display it this way because you can get the cohort from this. In other words, you can go, so we thought by displaying it this way, we actually could obtain both, because you can pull the cohorts by looking at the different years. Once we have several years set up, you can go back and look at cohorts. But we thought this was the best way to display it because it gave us a variety of, of ways of interpreting it.
Okay, so it still might be part of the conversation.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Is that it? Mr. Loelen.
Thank you very much. A couple of quick questions here. I noticed with, with the implementation of targets, not, sorry, with the setting of targets on page, you know, kind of 31 on, we have a target year of 2020, and I get, this is a five-year plan. Is there any intention of adding an intermediary target so that we are able to measure against something sooner than five years out?
So if I heard you correctly.
2018, 2017. Is there an intermediary target?
Yes. I think we haven't decided exactly how we're going to do that yet. We'll always, I think, first of all, we're, some of these, the reliability of some of the baseline data and the, well, not the baseline data, but the reliability of some of the performance indicators, we're not that sure of in some cases. We also haven't, all those, whatever we call them, strategies or, or actions, we haven't actually gone through and decided, how long will this take? Is this, can we do this in a year? Do we need to do it over two years? So, and we can't do them all in the same year. So we're going to have to pick the ones and lay them out over the five-year period. And that may, depending on what we focus on, it may impact some targets more than others. So I think what we're probably going to have to do is, as we outline the work, we're going to have to look at the targets. We will look at the targets every year and potentially have to reset them. I'm not so sure it's a matter of, of setting intermediary targets right now as it is. Let's see what happens in one year, and then maybe we have to adjust the five-year target. Or maybe we have to really do some intermediate target work.
Okay. And I guess that last comment brings me on to my next, which is assessing it every year. Can we build into this somewhere a framework where it basically comes to the board for presentation and any tweaking that may need to occur? And I think it needs to be built into this document so that we know it'll occur. But I think that to have it come back to us for refinement each and every year or adjustments, either up or down, as, as may be needed, I think that'd be really helpful. To your point number 10.
Can I, on page eight is laid out the expected review process. I think that's an important part of this document, once we approve it, whether the board is saying that's an appropriate process and whether that speaks to your question or not.
I, I think that there will be the report back, but I think the input of the board is, am I missing that in there? Is there input from the board for adjustments, or is this solely the reporting out?
And so the annually, the administration will prepare a public update, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, during the previous year? You'd like a sentence in there that said, and that will be an agenda item or something like that?
Yeah, so we, we wait now till the third year of the implementation, a formal review of the plan should be undertaken to determine if specific actions need to be modified, subtracted, or added. I think that that should happen probably every year. And if we do it every year, it may not necessarily need to be as onerous a task as if we wait three years. But especially in light of some of the comments earlier, where we can't add certain metrics now, or we're reluctant to add certain metrics now, such as the SATs, because they're changing, you know, the test in several years, or the S-BAC. I think that, you know, an annual review, that's happening annually, would be very beneficial.
Can I interrupt Paul, I'm sorry, Mr. Faderbein, did you want to follow up on that?
I want to follow up on that.
And Mr. Loelen?
Please, go ahead. Can I, can I comment now on about it?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Mr. Loelen has yielded the floor.
Right, I, I agree that we should assess, there should be some assessment of how we're doing in this district improvement plan. And I've actually have language which I was going to propose, and I guess the appropriate place to put it, my, looking at this quickly, I was going to put it in a different location, but I see your, your part three review progress. I would suggest that after the first sentence, where it says, because of a rapidly changing educational landscape, any plan of this duration will need regular updating and review. And then I would include what I was going to propose just in general, which would be in addition to the following sentences. So in other words, they're not necessarily exclusive. He would still have, the superintendent or the administration can still prepare a public update. But after that first sentence in that part three, I would add the language, or perhaps a second, another paragraph, to read, district improvement is necessarily a continuous process. As such, this district improvement plan must be reviewed by the Board of Education periodically and at least annually. Prior to September of each year, the superintendent shall present the implementation status of the district improvement plan, together with any recommended modifications for consideration and affirmance of the Board of Education. So that basically keeps us within reviewing how we're doing with this district plan, and the superintendent can then make recommendations as to what changes or modifications may be considered. And then we would then consider those suggestions or modifications or recommendations and act upon it accordingly. I, I think that it's sort of necessary because it's hard to foresee what happens five years from now and what the needs of the district are in five years. And it's such a, I, I think annually is not a difficult thing to do, and I think we have a specific time. I made September because then the school year's over, they have the summer to sort of assess what happened the last school year. And then prior to the beginning of the first, of the next school year, they can sort of tell us where we are. So I can pass this forward.
One of the sentences is, in there is, in addition, we will set out the specific actions to be undertaken during the next school year, which I think is similar to the theme. And so I'll suggest that the staff take this paragraph that's here and the sentence that you've added.
Right.
And blend it together in a way that.
Right. The only thing I think is essential is that there's a specific, a time where that's going to be done, so no one, everyone knows, like, in September, you're going to get that, that review, rather than just sometime it's going to happen, we don't know when.
Okay, thank you. Back to Mr. Loelen.
Thank you. Back to the comment about the SATs. I actually do think the SATs and the S-BACs should be added to this. I understand the concern that we really don't know what our target should be, but I think that they're very important metrics if we want to kind of gray out the box for a 2020 target and set that at some date in the future. I think we can do that, but I think they need to be tracked. If there's reluctance for the SAT because of the impending changes, we could add the ACT. The ACT, I don't believe is changing as dramatically, if at all, compared to the SAT, and I think there's an increased use of the ACTs, and I think we'll see a much bigger jump as these changes come through on the SATs. One of the points we had made in, or I had made last time, is adding a category on here as it relates to both career and college placement. And I'm not sure how you would measure it, or maybe it gets back to Ms. Loom McCormick's concept of the drop-down box on the web, but we do have software for, like Naviance. So we know where our kids are getting accepted. And I think that that is a good way for us to track how well we're doing. It's somewhat subjective, but it's still a metric out there. And because we subscribe to Naviance, I don't believe that it should require a significant amount of work or sorting. It would be like going to the state for graduation rates.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Are you suggesting, like, how do you want percentage of students? Is that what you're thinking of?
No, I, I think, you know, a, a listing of number of folks by school acceptance rate. Doesn't necessarily mean they need to attend it, but last year we had 27 kids into Harvard, Yale, and whatever else. So we could do a list of colleges and the number of accepted kind of year over year. I think that that's something that Naviance can provide for us. We're not asking necessarily where they're attending, but more of an acceptance rate. Same, same would be true with, on the career side, you know, our kids kind of going out to where they want to go. That one, I'm not sure how easy that would be to track, but a challenge to put out to you. Back to Ms. Loom McCormick's comment about adding the advanced levels for i-ready.
And sometimes it might be helpful if you reference the page so that we follow the.
Sure.
There you are.
i-ready is on page, 38, sorry.
38.
Number 17.
Thank you.
But I do notice as well that we, we're only talking about grade level here, as opposed to kind of beyond grade level, or, or in our advanced level like we have for some of our other measurements. I think that would be a good thing to have.
Could you clarify what, what would be a good thing to have?
Okay, so if we go and we look at page 34, district common assessment writing, we say percent at or above grade level, and we say percent at advanced level. If we look at the CMTs, we have percent at advanced, we have percent at or above goal. But then when we start to transition over to star, I believe, as well as i-ready, which are in the 16s and 17s, pages 37 and 38, we're only concerned ourselves with grade level. And if those are, anything like the CMTs, you know, that, that's a relatively low bar, and we should be concerned about all levels.
Yeah, I agree with you, except that I do not believe we get the data reported that way. So I don't know if, if anyone can speak to that, but I think for both star and i-ready, I don't believe we get the data reported out that way, but maybe someone can speak to it.
Percent above grade, oh, we already have that.
Yeah, just don't be like an advanced. I don't think it would be that one.
Good evening.
Oh, yeah. Actually, I, I believe we do actually report the data out by, we have, at each grade level, we report it out as at and above grade level and also just above grade level. So that data is there. If you say, for example, let's look at i-ready for kindergarten. At the first number, it says percent at and above grade level, 79.7, and the target 83. Then you go down, where is it?
Then you go down, where is it? Down two, three lines, two lines, percent above grade level. That gives you the two percentages that we have listed there.
That's what the same as...
I'm speaking to I-Ready.
No, I know, but that's what he's referring to. He's saying, can we report advanced?
Oh, so you said it's a name, how you want to name that?
No, no, it's a different data point.
Okay.
So I guess I don't understand the differentiation between at or above and above, because if I'm at or above, I'm above.
Maybe just because of the different way that data has been reported out from those levels, from that assessment. I mean, they're two different assessments. They may report them out differently. I don't know what John wants to...
Yeah, I can, I mean, that's essentially the difference. When STAR reports the reading achievement levels, they report it at a grade level that's nationally normed, and it's specifically done by Lexile score. So what you won't, they won't break, they don't break it down by exceeds grade level or advanced. There's no category that it's codified that way. So what you'll see is the percentage of kids whose Lexile score is norm reference at a grade level, and then you'll get a score for those kids who exceed that. But they don't have a column that they identify as exceeds grade level or advanced, excuse me.
So if they give it to us by Lexile level, should we have that down instead?
Oh, there's, absolutely, you could have the Lexile scores, but I'm saying there's just no category that they would call advanced.
Sorry. So as opposed to putting in a baseline data of percent at grade level, why don't we put in average Lexile? Because that's probably a much more accurate measurement of where our children are.
You could, but by grade level, the grade level for Lexile, there's a range, it's not one specific number. And so that's why it would vary. So you could do that, but at the same time, one of the other ways that it's referenced is by grade level and grade level material. So that's the, we kind of went with their descriptors. I mean, we could make that adjustment if we wanted to, to see what would be more accurate.
How would you look at it if you were trying to assess a classroom?
I would look at both, and I think both, with the way that teachers would look at it, they would want to know specifically the kids who are kind of nationally at grade level, but then specifically to make kind of instructional decisions, they're going to want to know specifically grade level and the Lexile score based on that particular assessment.
Right.
And see if it matches up with what they're seeing in the classroom. So they would use both, both data points.
Okay, thank you. So I don't know if that is helpful, Ms. Parks, in terms of adding kind of Lexile in the absence of an advanced, because that at least tells us if we're...
Yeah, I'd like to take that back to the district data.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Sure.
And then I think I made my comment already in the ACT and the SAT in terms of kind of putting it on here. Perfect, I guess I'm fine for the moment, thank you.
So I don't see any hands raised. Shall I go to the public and then come back to the board for any further conversation? I still don't see any hands raised, because I'm looking over here. I don't know who went up first, but Mrs. Max and Caneli, followed by Mr. Fattabean.
A couple of things. First of all, I think Mr. Llewellyn is bringing up the issue of Naviance in colleges because he wants to match B.C. against Holy Cross, but that's just my personal opinion on that.
There's no match there.
You're right, there's not. So, but I have to admit that that's a category that I'm not very comfortable with until we know exact, I mean, what are we talking about? Percent Ivy League, percent whatever? If it's percent college acceptance, or even finding out that a percent college acceptance into first, I don't know. But I have to admit, that's not an area I'm comfortable with. I'm also not comfortable with the SAT, but I like the idea that we could come back to it by virtue of the language Mr. Fattabean has added, because this SAT is a big unknown. The numbers on it could change radically, of course, also if the state makes a move to approve that as a mastery test. Same with S-Back, that is just such a moving target in the schools. We don't know what's going, what's going on with that. I know in central office that you don't. But I'm comfortable with not having it on here, again, because of Mr. Fattabean's language, that once we get a better sense of that, even two or three years down the road, it's something we could look at. That said, I would like to, my final word is one note of caution to the board. The data that is out there, this doesn't even come close to the data that's produced in this district. And at some point, you have to stop and say, we've determined that this is what we want our teachers to go after, because we're sending a message to our teachers with every new data point, oh, this one's important, this one's important, this one's important too. And there comes a point where, I mean, we're already here now, well, we can't have another recess for kindergarten because their curriculum is too extensive. I mean, that was, the conversation's out there. At some point, there is initiative fatigue. And the moment we start saying that the SAT, for example, especially given what an unknown it is right now, or each new measurement, we have to decide what's important, and some things have to be left off the list. And I just put that out as a caution, as, you know, potentially there could come a point where I would not be in favor of something being added, because I think there are some clear priorities here. It doesn't mean other things aren't still happening, but this would truly be the language of, keep your eye on the goal, keep the focus, this is it. There's been a tremendous amount of work, again, that went into this. And that's not that there aren't more data points out there, and it's not that they aren't important, but at some point, it's got to stop. Or you are just, you're sending the wrong message to the teachers and the staff.
Thank you. Mr. Fattabean?
All right, well, I have two questions, two comments then. The first one is sort of respond to Mrs. Max and Caneli.
Here's a look at the names I can...
One of my concerns is a lot of these assessments are district common assessments, which are in-house. The only assessments that are derived from outside sources are CMT and the CAP test, which may or may not be there from long, and the I-Ready and the STAR tests. What you just heard may not give us all the data we want, or may not give us data on particular groups or subgroups that are of interest. So therefore, I think that I'd be looking at some sort of other nationalized or normalized tests that we can compare as a district, how we're doing with other districts, not just within our own district. I think that's an important aspect of any five-year plan or any plan to improve the district is not just, you have to know how you're doing with respect to other districts as well, and other states and so forth. So there should be some more national assessment, I think, at some point or something. The other comment I, is unrelated to that, but, and that relates to the changes that were made to the, on page twenty-seven, two dash six, and relates to the, the language related to the alternative high school has changed. And it reads now, use best practice models to create a top-notch alternative high school program. I guess maybe top-notch is a word of educational art that I may not be totally familiar with, and I can't really quantify what exactly that may be. So I would suggest maybe you rephrase it or be rephrased in what we're really trying to achieve. And we're really trying to achieve improved learning and student achievement. So I would just indicate, use best practice models to improve learning and student achievement in the alternative high school program. That's the bottom line is what you want to do. I'm not quite sure what, how people would interpret top-notch.
Okay, thank you. We are looking at the time, so if I can move to the public, so do you have a quick comment?
Yeah, I only got to speak once.
Say again?
I say I only got to speak once. I just, I have...
Please do.
Three things to say. Okay. One is, on the page thirty-two, I know we had added the AP Calculus and Multi-Variable Participation, which I think that's a really good measure. I think adding on to that, that would...
So that we can take notes?
I haven't said anything new yet to take notes.
Well, no, you made note about that you were glad something was added, so Karen's just trying to keep, keep track.
Oh, yes, I'm glad about...
Thirty-two.
Page thirty-two, number ten.
At the bottom of the page.
Yeah, I like that. I think what would go along with that well, which I think we should add, and I know we don't want to add many, but this is actually on the strategic school profiles for all the districts within Connecticut, so it's something that we should track openly, is the, our articulation into middle school, into transitional pre-algebra or pre-algebra, which I guess they call high school math, within middle school. That is a statistic that they track, and we can see how we're doing against other districts within the state.
So what, can you be more specific about what measure you're looking at?
Yeah, how many kids or what percentage of kids that we have taking high school math in middle school? So who articulate into high school math in middle school? And that would mean, you know, algebra, taking algebra, geometry in middle school.
Yeah, so the reason we chose the other measure is because we believe that is a more accurate measure of those students who were successfully identified to advance math in middle school, because they continue to advance as they go through high school.
So I agree that that's an important statistic, to see how well the kids that we put into those actually succeed. But I think we also need to see how many kids are actually putting into those programs. We don't know if we're putting, you know, how we're doing versus others, because I've seen that, you know, if we have forty-two percent of our kids doing it, or forty percent, I see other districts that have seventy percent of our kids. And maybe at the end of the day, we put forty-two percent in and we get forty-two percent out, right? And they put seventy percent in and they only get fifty percent out, right? So they're not necessarily identifying correctly. But it could also be, are we identifying enough? Are we pushing through enough? Do we have, are we accelerating the kids enough? Because we have very rigid identification criteria that we have in this district, right? Versus others to get into pre-algebra, to get into, you know, test, 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 test.
I'll bring the suggestions back to the data team, but they need to have input. And you also have to realize that we, we don't have full-time data managers. So every time you add something...
I understand.
We're asking more and more, and I'm not sure, so I don't want to produce data that doesn't give us a valuable indicator, because then we're just having people...
I totally agree. I'm just saying, this is on the Connecticut website. This is a comparative data point that allows us to compare ourselves versus other districts. It's a common, it's common. Okay, so that's one. The other one is on page twenty-seven, item two dash one. Align all school improvement plans with the district improvement plan. Yeah, so that's good. But again, to share and review annually the individual school improvement plan.
Twenty-seven.
So that would be to highlight the pros and cons...
Can you repeat?
Each year. So this is on page twenty-seven, item two dash one, under teams and improvement plans. It says align all school improvement plans with the district improvement plan, right? So that's good. But I would like to ask if we can also have that we will also share and review annually, right, at a board meeting, the individual school improvement plans summarizing, right, the pros and the cons for that improvement plan each year. I think it's something that I know is available on the website if you dig around hard enough, because I've pulled them all up, but that's not something that we openly have discussed, reviewed. We don't see the consistency, we don't see, we don't fully understand the pros and cons of each individual school, and what each individual school's needs might be, because I believe they are actually different across the district. Needs aren't necessarily the same. And I think that we as a board should understand the pieces that make up our district. All right, so there's that one. And then I do have the rest of it.
Point of clarification, so are you asking for a presentation for seventeen schools?
Not a present, no, you know, I guess maybe a presentation. We're going through the numbers, and we're going through the progress of the district improvement plan, that we put up a summary page with maybe, you know, the top three and the topic. I mean, they're done already. Each school has done them. We don't have to discuss them.
So they're accessible on their school, every school website will have access to that. So you're asking, in addition to something that every board member and member of the public has access to, you're additionally asking...
It's not easily...
I completely agree with you.
Are we debating this? This is my comment session.
I'm objecting to the language you're asking to add, because I think it is excessive.
Two different opinions, but the data team will take into consideration.
This is my request, is that there should actually be a summary for each of the individual schools, with maybe their top three pros, top three cons, like the three things they did the best, the three things they, this is kind of like common review process in a lot of things. But I think that that would be very helpful to start the year off, particularly if there's a new board, where each of them reviews, or we do a quick review. We don't have to discuss them, but we should be aware. And then the last one is on the same page, item two point, two dash six, with that top-notch. So I'm just not clear why we need something that specifically highlights a top-notch alternative high school.
That comment's already been made, and the staff will be looking at that language.
Okay, I would actually say, why do we have to have this at all? Why wouldn't we just strike this? And why do we have a two-year plan on it? Because don't we want top-notch, all our programs to be top-notch? So I'm not sure why we're highlighting this particular program, unless there's a real problem.
Because if you recall in the original presentation, Mrs. Leonardi explained that we were hoping to add a lot of improvements to the alternative high school so that we may be able to attract students from other districts, because not all districts have an alternative high school, and there's a certain type of student that benefits in that program. So that was, so that's the old language, I think there were board members who felt didn't really explain what we were attempting to do. So this was the new language, which clearly doesn't do it yet either. But the idea was to create a program that is so well-functioning and addresses the needs of those particular students so well, that it actually attracts students from other districts, not only...
But I'm not sure if the board has decided that that is in fact a priority.
Well, if, once we vote this, if the phrase is still in there to focus on improving the Fitzgerald campus, then effectively, we will have voted...
I disagree with that as well. I think we should take that up as a separate topic, because here's what's just transpired. It was watered down to using best practices, yet we hear the undertone is to still grow it and go out externally. We've seen no business plan for it, we've asked for it, we've seen no information, we were told at the last meeting that it did not currently meet our expectations, yet should we be out trying to generate revenue from a program that is not yet up to par? I don't think it is at the state now, or could potentially be at the state in the next several years, where we should be out trying to recruit people. I think that that is something that's being snuck in here and should be voted on completely separately, because it has to do with a very different cost basis. That's not measurement.
Yes, totally agree, because this is, this has budgetary implications.
Correct.
That's right. So this should not be implying that the board in any way has approved an expansion or like deeper investment at this point, outside of trying to make it a good facility, as we want all our programs to be good programs.
And you have other, was that your final point, or did you have another point that you wanted to make?
No, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Patton, I'm going to go to Mr. Patton, then take a motion to extend, and then I'll come to Mr. Llewellyn.
Do you need to hit the motion to extend yet?
It depends on whether you're going to go more than nine minutes.
No, I will not.
Okay, thank you.
Most of my questions were pretty much asked, so I'm just going to weigh in on several of the topics that we've been going back and forth on. I'll go most recent. I do think, I'm not necessarily in favor of the language that has been changed here on the alternative high school, but I do think that, I know that is a priority, and budget aside, I do think there should be something on page, whatever this is, twenty-seven, that mentions the alternative high school as a plan that we're looking to kind of concentrate on. This is a five-year program, and, you know, budgetary reasons aside, I think it's needed, it's necessary, it's kind of, you know, we've made some budget decisions with that school this year in the positive, and I think we kind of need to state it in bold that, you know, we plan on continuing on that track. In terms of things like SATs, I think it might not be a bad idea to have a placeholder for something like that, but I don't necessarily agree that that particular test is, you know, or the ACT or any of the other ones, you know, but I think we should have a placeholder more, you know, for a national test, I think that's not a bad idea. In terms of things like the college statistic, in my opinion, I think how many students have gone on to another form of education, whether it's, you know, tech schools or four-year colleges or anything like that, I think that would be an interesting indicator, if that could be broken down simply. But in terms of going to how many kids went to this university, or that university, or that tech school, from what we hear from students graduating every year, nobody even wants to... year, nobody even wants to tell other students where they're applying because they're not going to, you know, a lot of schools don't accept more than one or two people from a district, period. So you're going to have like, you know, a hundred, two hundred-plus, you know, different places for people to go. And this one might get two people, this one might get three. I just think that's, that's just a kind of a waste of time, but a general indicator might be okay. And otherwise, I think the changes are all in the right direction. I think the indicators at the end in those changes, you know, are on the right track. I'm anxious to, you know, jump three years in the future to see where some of this stuff lies. And, you know, I'm really happy with the way this has taken shape over the last year to two years.
Thank you. I'm going to suggest, unless people wish to stay here forever, that perhaps we finish this item up, seven A, that we finish up, where am I?
Seven A.
Yeah, seven A, and that we do seven B, so we get the first reading out of the way. And then we look to adjourn at that point and defer the rest of the items onto another meeting. And with that in mind, does somebody wish to make a, Mr. Llewellyn, how much time do you think you need for wrapping up your district initiative discussion? Maybe two minutes? Is there any other board member that has any other comments that they wish to make? So perhaps it's ten fifty-three, shall we, eleven fifteen, eleven twenty? Somebody make a motion that would allow us to get to the public and then come back to the board for any final comments. This is Maxon Connolly.
I was going to make a motion to extend to eleven-ten.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Carnell, with no debate, all in favor of eleven-ten? Well, okay, it's not unanimous, so is it unanimous or not? No, okay. So Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Maxon Connolly, in favor, opposed? Mrs. Lou McCormick? Mr. Fattabene, Mr. Llewellyn, that means that we have to extend by a two-thirds vote? I don't think we got a two-thirds vote?
Nope.
Yeah, we did not. So eleven o'clock, so let me give you your two minutes and then I'll go to the public.
So the meeting will not be extended? So I make a motion to extend it to eleven-thirty.
Okay, so you objected, you objected to the time, not to the extension.
Correct.
There's a second. Eleven-thirty. All in favor, raise your hand.
It won't go that long.
It's unanimous, good. Eleven-thirty, make your two minutes.
No, I don't.
We're still going to get out of here by eleven-ten, but this gives us margin.
So real, two, two real quick wrap-ups. One is going back on the comment of adding stuff for the sake of, and the work that goes into it. But in terms of the SAT and the ACT, there's no work to generate that. And we're not trying to drive teachers in that direction, but it's probably the single most important test that a junior or senior will take. So I do think it actually belongs on here. And in terms of the dialogue that just occurred with the alternative high school, I mean, let's be really clear. I think we do need to work to improve what we're delivering there. I think that we are very misguided if we think that working to improve it means that we need to then expand it to something that we want to offer to other towns without a full analysis. And I don't even think that should be on here until we've actually taken that school to a place where we feel as though it is meeting our objectives. I think it is, if it's being snuck in here, which it sounds like it is, because it's, oh, it'll be voted on as part of this, I think that's disingenuous. I think that it's bigger than just part of a five-year plan, but that's where I stand on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now we will, one, two, three, four, five, six members of the public who are still here, if I don't count the teaching staff. Any members of the public wish to come forward and speak on the five-year district improvement plan? Please do so.
Christine Vitale, two fifty-four, Vernon Hill Road. Just about the colleges, not every student, their end-all is to get into Harvard and Ivy League. I would not put that in there as a measure. I think it might create a bad environment for guidance counselors, that there might be an impetus for guidance counselors to now advise students to maybe apply to schools that may or may not be the best fit. So I think that there are other measures. We have the survey, I believe got approved with the budget, that we'll be able to get some data from our graduates, which I think is important. I would also, need to review this, but remember it's a five-year plan. Excuse me. I get, I just have a vision a year from now of this plan getting rewritten completely. I think you need to just, I ask, request that you look five years out. It's a strategic plan. It's not a yearly district initiative plan. So just keep that in back of your head. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Suzanne Meska, one twenty-three Rygate Road. First, the form that you're asking on colleges has already been produced by Mr. Esposito at FLHS. It lists how many students attended each college. We got it in November, so I think you can have it. Second, S-Bacs, if you're going to ask students to take them, then please use them somehow. If we're going to make juniors sit down and take a test after they've taken everything else this year as some sort of measurement tool for the district, let's use that measurement tool somewhere in here. I don't care how you do it, but then if you're not going to use it, then I question why we're asking our students to take the test. And lastly, and most importantly, in my opinion, having looked at this document, what struck me the most is that we have a class of students that we have referred to in this document as free and reduced lunch students, whose performance, based on the benchmarks that are in here, is dramatically less than the rest of the school community. And as a parent, I would like to know why. While I appreciate we want to improve it, how the heck did we get to some of the benchmark numbers that are listed on this document to begin with? We had a strategic improvement plan that lasted five years, in which we received no data as to what we did. To see in this document again that we're still trying to figure out how to transition between fifth and sixth grade and eighth and ninth grade, after that was one of the primary objects in Dr. Title's statement when he became superintendent, and it's still now finding itself in here is, is a big concern. So lastly, this document, it would be nice as a parent and a taxpayer and a member of the community, there's no community involvement in the creation of this document, except to come here and stay here until eleven o'clock and get your three minutes. If this is supposed to be involving the stakeholders in this community, this document has not. Thank you.
Please state your name and address.
Tricia Donovan, Fairfield. I have several comments. This plan was constructed by an internal group of people, and I'm sure they've done a lot of work, but a long-term plan of any importance credibility deserves the input of all of its stakeholders. It's my belief that the discussion should not be limited to a website feedback form or three minutes of public comment by members of the public. The superintendent and Board of Ed members should take this proposal on the road and meet constituents in person to form working groups to discuss what is important and what needs to be prioritized. They can go to each school. They can invite the public, taxpayers as well as parents to participate. The superintendent and Board of Ed members could visit and synthesize all the feedback that is given. As is typical, the board table discussions are limited by time and the inability to interact directly with the community. A plan that is vetted by everyone has a much greater chance of success, as everyone is heavily vested in it. This would also help fulfill one of your resource goals listed on page thirteen that states, partner with parents to achieve system priorities and goals. My second comment is on the indicators. There are far too many indicators listed for anyone to make sense of them, especially since many of them are new. As a parent, I would like to know how many tests are given by grade level, how much time is spent on testing by grade level, and how highly correlated they are to student achievement. Do they give us feedback on achievement of students? Do they give us feedback on instruction? What does each test serve? I would also like to mention that there is no nationally normed test for elementary school. We talk about number ten on page thirty-two for AP calculus and multivariable participation. And I think Ms. Lou McCormick pointed out that we need to track that, but I would go even further back into the fifth grade identification process and say, how many kids are we identifying in the fifth grade level? And are we successful in bringing them all the way through? Or are we losing people along the way? So how well are we identifying? Are we under? Are we over-identifying? And perhaps use of the Iowa test that we're using to identify those students should be more broadly used to identify students at the fifth grade level rather than double-testing them with an internal test and then the Iowa. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else getting up at the moment? I don't see so. So back to the board. Any final comments that people wish to make? Ms. Carnell, followed by Mr. Llewellyn.
I think there's been maybe some confusion of their quest about tracking the colleges. It seemed to have been, had been taken a little out of sequence or proportion. I know what I had in mind was to see, are the students achieving and getting into the schools they want? I don't care if it's Harvard or any other school. Are they getting to the schools they want? I think that's part of what we'd like to track. That's what I'd like to see tracked.
I think Mr. Fattabene asks questions from time to time of the students. Do you get into your first or second choice school? It's kind of what you're referencing. Yeah, yeah. Mr. Llewellyn?
This is actually a question for you, Mr. Dwyer. You had mentioned at prior meetings the concept of having an open public forum again-
Yes.
-to get feedback on this particular document.
Yes.
Are we going to be doing that ahead of voting?
Yes.
We are. And when is that scheduled for?
You're stealing my thunder for my last comment.
Oh, thank God.
June tenth, June tenth at seven-thirty. We have sent out notifications to people that we'll be having a, another one of those dialogue meetings, town hall meetings, where we can have back-and-forth dialogue. Our hope is that focus will be on the district improvement plan, but in a town hall-style meeting, anybody that wants to stand up and talk about lights at a school, unless the board would limit it to only the district improvement plan, but we have not really, we started this concept in saying that this was an open dialogue concept for town hall, but it's being advertised to focus on the district improvement plan, June tenth.
Okay, thank you. And we're going to be vote, our second read is after, is before that June tenth meeting?
The second read, but the final vote won't be until the end of June.
Right. I'm just wondering if that leaves us enough time to incorporate public's comments? Just as a question.
Yeah. Was that, okay, back to the board as we're wrapping up this agenda item. Mrs. Maxon Connolly, seven B, first reading of policy, forty-two seventeen.
Okay, so this policy before you is entirely in red because it is entirely new. It was also a language that initially came verbatim from CAE, which we then in Policy Committee, the three of us, reworked extensively to make this something that we thought was better suited to us. And so this is just something that we thought this was really important to be able to state upfront and to be able to hand up front to all current and future employees, as well as the idea to volunteers as well in terms of standards of conduct. And so that's the rationale behind it. And I'll leave it there. Anyone have a chance for any initial questions?
Any questions on the first read? Mr. Fattabene, followed by Mrs. Lou McCormick.
I understand the document. I looked at it. I'm going to probably make some suggested changes.
Okay.
And that would be-
If you could send those to me, I'd love to possibly have that as a discussion at the, at the policy meeting as well, but-
I can tell you right now, they're very minor. On the third paragraph, second line of the third paragraph-
Oh, yeah.
District Board, it says only as it may directly affect.
Yeah.
I would delete only as and put if. On the second bullet-
What? What does it say, only as?
Delete only as and put if. The second bullet, the employee's fitness to be placed in a position of, I would put influence or trust. And in the last line of the policy, wherever it says volunteers will be held to the same standard of conduct, I would just, to make it clear, as employees. The same content of standard as employees. Because this relates to employees, this, this policy.
Well, personnel, yes.
Right, personnel.
Okay, thank you.
Please. Mrs. Maxon Connolly, you have the notes, so you can take it to the committee?
Mm-hmm.
Let's raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick.
I have a question regarding the term appropriately dressed.
Yes.
Should we be more specific than that?
We very much discussed that at length and what it's, back-up added around quite a bit. And what we decided is that, in explicitly addressing that, that we want to use the phrase appropriately dressed, and that at that point, leave it up to the discretion of the administrators. The point being, this, the administrators will now have the weight of a Board of Ed policy behind them when they go and speak with, right now, they do not have this.
I just worry that this opens the door for the discussion of what appropriately dressed means, and if there's going to be a wide variation. This school lets you wear jeans, that's appropriately dressed, but this school says that you need to wear a, you know, something more formal than that. And so I'm concerned that this does not then, it won't be equitably delivered.
And I hear that point. And then the moment you try to get into the details on that one, that was where we figured that the, our well-qualified and well-paid administrators, that they can take this one on, as opposed to at the level of board policy in that, that we trusted in leaving this to the administrators, and in that as they work that, they have this behind them. And that you're, because you're absolutely right. You know, how do you define appropriately dressed?
I would say that-
We prefer to leave that to the staff to follow through on that.
I hear you.
I'm just explaining, that's the rationale behind the reasoning.
Let me just make a suggestion, because I've, I've had this in corporate America before, where there was a big adjustment from formal attire, women having to wear skirts, women having to wear pantyhose, heels, down to pantsuits, and then basically they went down to business casual. And at this point, I think the term business casual has a very open, somewhat loose connotation, but also has just a little bit of formality to it, which might be sufficient to leave the administrators enough room to kind of maneuver within that, without being so completely vague as to the concept of what's appropriate and what's not. Because there's kind of a well-established, when you say business casual, people understand what that means. So I'll make that suggestion that for work to be dressed business casual, at least business casual. And the other item I'd like to suggest is, in the effectively, every employee is expected to deal effectively with students. I might throw in this just to soften it, effectively and respectfully with students, because effectively can also be interpreted many ways. So maybe adding that in kind of guides it. But again, that's just a soft suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
I only have one question. Does this policy extend to board members and the chair gets to do?
No.
That's a rhetorical question.
Yeah, I know.
Who, you have the final word on this?
Just somewhat related to what Mr. Fattabene was referencing in terms of volunteers. So it almost seems like, because it's in the last, the last two sentences, that the volunteer aspect was kind of thrown in at the end. So I guess my question is, is this policy meant to be for personnel, non-certified, certified, and volunteers? Or how do the volunteers figure into the formulation of this policy? You know, in my opinion, they should either, you should either have that in the, you know, the title of the policy and add and volunteers, you know, or the volunteer stuff at the end should be taken out.
And actually, it's interesting, the draft I'm looking at, which Mr. Llewellyn can attest to the degree that it got marked up, we had at one point in our conversation, had personnel certified slash non-certified slash volunteer, and then in the course of discussion, decided to take that out. We didn't like that. And I have to admit, I don't fully remember what the conversation was, but that was specifically broached and specifically decided that we preferred to- broached and specifically decided that we preferred to have it down at the bottom. Mrs. Parks, I don't know if you, I know we had talked about how it would work to have it in the previous paragraphs, but it was a very deliberate decision, and Ms. Carnell, maybe you can remember as well, why we decided ultimately that we preferred it in at the bottom. The point being, this is something that could be followed up with, but that the focus was on the certified, non-certified personnel. And Mrs. Parks, I don't know if you recall either, except that, again, we did make that change and then decided to take that out.
So my recollection is that in the CAE policy, they did not address volunteers. And at the Policy Committee meeting, there was a strong desire to include volunteers. So, but in the personnel section of the policy manual, that's, this is really related to our employees, but by adding the line at the end that we wanted volunteers to be held accountable to the same standard.
So I think...
So I don't think it's in conflict.
No, that was exactly my thought process.
So it just reads to me as very stuffed in at the end, oh, yeah, we wanted to make sure that volunteers were held to the same standard, so, you know, we're kind of shoving it at the end. But if this is a personnel policy, and the volunteers are not personnel, and they're not necessarily brought in by personnel.
Well, they're...
I mean, they're volunteers.
They're non-certified, unpaid volunteer staff.
I actually just remembered one of the arguments that we'd used to determine. If you look at the third paragraph, where it does in fact mention that something could rise to the level of needing to be brought to the attention of the district and the board, that would never be the case with volunteers. If there's an issue with a volunteer, that's dealt with at the school level by the school administrator immediately. So that was, now that I recall, that was actually one specific reason why we did not want it worked in earlier. It's just plain and simple, volunteers are held to the same conduct, but in terms of what the follow-up would be, there's, it wouldn't be coming before us, the school administrator would address it immediately. So that was one very specific reason why we didn't want it worked in earlier. And yet, we want them to be aware that they are held to the same standard of conduct.
Is there no other policy or place in the policy manual where we could have a, whether it's even a one-paragraph policy in and of itself about volunteers?
Why this might be...
I just really don't think it's appropriate here at all. I mean, I agree that it should be in the policy manual, I just don't agree it should be in this policy.
And one of the reasons why we like it here, as opposed to a separate one, that also, I believe, and again, Ms. Carnell can correct me if I'm wrong, that actually briefly came up as a topic, maybe we should have a second one, but the idea of having this idea of conduct in a single policy, should there be need for revision in the future, it can be made in this one place. I mean, that's part of what we're trying to sort out in that massive policy manual, is where do we sometimes have a policy in one place? And something of similar language with a similar intent in a different place, we update one and not realize the other one is there. And so that was one of the, also the idea here, is this is conduct in terms of, you know, interaction with children, et cetera, let's have it all in one place. So that was talked about, you know, we briefly toyed with that idea, but ultimately, we wanted it here.
Okay, I guess it's a difference of opinion, but okay. That's all I have.
Anything else from the board on this particular first read? So this policy, can I say to the board that there may be some editorial changes that don't change the substance of the policy, and therefore will come back for a vote? But if the committee suddenly finds that they feel that there are too many changes of substance, well, then you're welcome as a committee to bring it back as a first read again, and then the second read. But we're assuming it's on the agenda for next meeting as a vote. We're now down to four. And there were three. Any members of the public that wish to comment on the first read of the policy, personnel, certified, non-certified conduct, number 4217?
Nancy Haverley, Duck Forum wrote, I agree with Mr. Patton. I think that the policy should talk about the personnel, certified staff, and I think volunteers, of course, should be held to the same standards, but I think that there should be a separate area to talk about the volunteers, because people who come into the school are not paid, they're not employees. So I think it really, it deserves a separate area so that parents and whoever, grandparents, whoever's coming in to help out, have a spot to look for that specifically. I think if it's kind of mixed in with something like this, as you're saying, I think it kind of takes away from it almost. So I definitely agree with Mr. Patton on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else coming forward? Seeing none, no more discussion on that. So therefore, I think we are at the point of a motion for adjournment. I don't think there's superintendent's report, any committee and liaison reports that need to be given at this time.
Could I just move to postpone to the next regular meeting, agenda items eight, nine, and 10? Is that the intent to?
If you wish to make it by motion, go ahead. Mr. Fattabene?
Move to postpone till the next regularly scheduled meeting, agenda items eight, A, B, and C, nine, 10, and 11.
Second, we could have accomplished the same thing, just with a motion to adjourn, but there's a second for the motion to postpone. Any discussion on the motion to postpone? If none, please raise your hand to approve the motion to postpone. The motion to postpone is unanimous. That leaves number 12, adjournment. Oop.
That's why I didn't vote for it. I actually wanted to say something.
It is not unanimous. My apologies. Mr. Fattabene, do you mind if I ask Mrs. Gerber why she objects to this motion? So that I can adequately record her vote? I didn't adequately record her vote or announce the vote. So what is it that you wanted to say that causes you to vote no?
I just wanted to give a committee update.
Please do.
Well, but the vote passed, so...
I haven't announced the vote, so the vote's not complete till I announce it. Please, take a minute.
Okay, I just wanted to take a moment to say that yesterday, I went to a ribbon-cutting ceremony at Osborne Hill School. The gym has been reopened after three years, so. And I just wanted to, I know he's not here, but I did want to just thank Mr. Moribito for just really persevering on this, and Mr. Aronon, and Mr. Marco at Osborne Hill and the PTA. It was a very long and arduous journey, and just seeing the children finally be able to use the gym after three years was really very, very special. You know, there are second graders who are finishing second grade who have never been in the gym in the building.
Go ahead.
And there are fifth graders who are graduating who haven't been...
Mr. Patton.
Never mind. Okay. Anyway, I just wanted to say that, so thank you.
Thank you. Now, now that we understand her objection, let's finish the vote. All in favor of adjournment, all in favor of the motion to postpone, please raise your hand, so I can adequately record the vote. Are you still negative on that? Okay, it's unanimous, right? Mrs. Lou McCormick? It's unanimous, fine. Now we're at the motion to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, second. Mr. Patton, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.